Or the work. I'm going to call it a word of the work session for Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. It is 2:00 PM. And I'll begin with a motion. While we're in open session, I move that the town council go into executive session under CRS section 24-6-4024B relating to conferences with the town attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice pertaining to a demand letter sent by Blazing Saddles Center Association. Pro Tem Owens, oh, and there's a second. Roll call, Pro Tem Owens.
Here.
You know, you say yes, to go to the motion.
Yeah.
Councilman Beckerman.
Present.
Councilman Bergeron. Not available. Councilman Carlton.
Yes.
Councilman Rankin.
Yes.
Inside a.
Yes.
All right. I also moved that the town council go into executive session CRS. Section 2464024E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators concerning the town's interest in land it may be interested in acquiring for municipal purposes.
Second.
Mayor or Mayor Mamula, yes, Pro Tem Owens.
Yes.
Councilman Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilman Bergeron is absent. Councilman Carlton.
Yes.
Councilman Rankin.
Yes.
Inside a.
Yes.
Councilwoman side A. And we are in executive session. New sheriff in town.
I can tell. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Yep. Right?
I have a list of questions.
Hasn't been emailed Kirsten.
Yeah, can you resend those?
No, they're, they're, yeah.
Thank you.
What's that? The list of questions?
Yes.
Yeah. It's very confusing when. Not everything's on the pack. The confidential and privileged information.
Same one. What we're gonna do is we will start with Jay. Start with you and we'll just go down and we'll.
What's the time limit you want to keep on each one?
Where'd you find them?
It's in the.
You go a little longer.
How much time do we have?
It's the second attachment on Friday, the.
Thank you.
From Kirsten?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, here it is. I'd like you guys to answer, ask the same question each time.
Okay.
Instead of some of us asking this, that question over. And what we'll do is we'll start with Jay. And then just go down the line.
Are you asking one?
I know I am not gonna ask any questions. I'm gonna let the council ask the questions. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Everybody, are we back on? I called to, I'm gonna recall to order town council work session for Tuesday, May 10th at 2:33 PM. Before we move on to Planning Commission, I do want to state that the town council has discussed in executive session whether to direct the manager to negotiate the acquisition of certain real property for municipal purposes under certain parameters which are confidential for purposes of negotiations. For sake of transparency, the decision as to whether to enter into and execute a final agreement on the acquisition is the authority of the manager. And with that, we will move on to planning commission decisions. We have nine different things going on here. Okay, we had the first two scratched, so we have five total and we begin with Ellie Doolan. Welcome.
Hi, good afternoon.
Okay, we have your letter of record. Thank you for applying and we begin with questions with Jay Beckerman.
Thanks, Eric. Good afternoon, Ms. Doolan. First question is, have you applied for any town board commission or committee in the past?
Well, I recently applied for the Planning Commission and I also applied for the Events Committee, but I was notified that someone else was picked for the Events Committee.
Thank you.
Carol.
Why are you seeking an appointment to this board? What is your interest in this board?
Yeah, thank you. So I have had some conversations with some of the existing members of the Planning Commission and they specifically reached out to me and said there was a vacancy. They thought that it would be something, a good way for me to get involved with things with the town, which I'm obviously interested in doing. That's why I ran for town council. I think that I have a very strong technical background. As you guys know, I'm an engineer. I previously served on the board of my HOA, so I've got some.
You can just pull the torch.
Yeah, sorry. So I've got some experience with, with making decisions for, for a planned community, obviously smaller. And then I was thinking of something else and I just like drew a blank. If I, if I think of it, I'll come back to it. Yeah. Yeah.
Hi, Ellie. Are you familiar with the Town's Development Code and Comprehensive Plan?
I've done a little bit of research on it, but I'm, I'm not all that familiar with it right now, but I'm a very quick learner and so if selected, you know, I'm, I'm got the time to really go in and, and, and study it.
Great.
Dick.
Have you attended a planning commission meeting before and what, what were your thoughts of the process that you observed if you have attended?
So I haven't attended a meeting before, but I have gone online and read some of the meeting minutes and, and seen the different things that, that the Planning Commission reviews and considers. So I definitely have, have read some of the meeting minutes from that.
Any thoughts on the process that you read about?
So one, one of, one of the ones that stood out to me recently was someone that was opening like a daycare in, in their business or sorry, in their home. And so that one was definitely of interest to me, just knowing that we have such an issue with childcare in the community and just seeing the process that I had to go through for getting the license from the state and then going to the Planning Commission to get approved. And I remember reading about some, some people were asking like, oh, did we do a, a traffic study or something? And it was for, for, I think, three or four, like kids that they were allowed to have. So I was definitely intrigued by that. That, that's, that's the one that kind of like stood, stood out to me in my mind just because of the, the childcare problem in our community.
Great, thanks.
How do you think planning efforts are going in town and are there any particular topics that you think the commission should be addressing?
Well, obviously I know that housing is a real big issue in our, in our community. And so I'm, I'm hoping that to see in the future that we're able to have more accessory dwelling units, that we're able to have more affordable housing for people. And if there's any way that I can help with that by being on the planning commission, then that's something that I'm definitely interested in because I know that housing is, is such a big issue in Breckenridge and Summit County.
Thanks. Excellent. Anything you'd like to add?
Oh, so I, I remember what I was thinking before. So just in, in general with being aerospace engineer and, and having just such a very strong technical background. I am very good at reading engineering drawings, blueprints, stuff like that, even though I designed satellites and rockets, I still know how to read, read an engineering drawing. And then the other thing is that I used to work in mission assurance and quality and, and part of that was working with OSHA and, and codes for designing built actual buildings that we would build our, our satellites in. So little experience in that area.
Excellent. Anything else you want to add?
No, not that I can think of. Thank you.
Great.
Yep.
Ellie, thank you. We'll make a decision this evening and we will let you know. Thank you.
Thanks, Ellie.
Thanks. Okay, who is? Who's next? Zobi. Um, was it? You guys good with the questions?
Because it was the best question.
Those questions?
I guess we can't change.
You wanted us to go in.
I, I'm sorry.
No, I should have asked.
I was, I was a little, I didn't, I thought we would have a couple of minutes to talk before she walked in, but ready for later. I blame, I blame Truckee. Mr. Zobi, hello.
Hello.
Thanks for coming.
How am I, how's my audio?
You're great. Just keep that thing near you and speak into the mic and you'll be great. And Michael Zobi, we will begin with question from Councilman Beckerman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Zobi. Have you applied for any town board commission or committee in the past?
Yes, I have. I've applied for BOSAC position in the past and of course ran for council last cycle.
Thank you.
Mike, why are you seeking an appointment to this board and what is your interest?
Well, my interest is I've lived here for almost 40 years and the visual of the town is very important to me. I, I think, you know, I've known of planning commission for an awful long time. I've known quite a few people that have been on the planning commission. And I think it's a very important role to create a position or to be in a position where you're between development proponents and, and councils so that there's actually a citizens committee that can look at proposals and evaluate the proposals and, and of course, you know, they need and make sure that they comply with all the codes and standards and anything, and, and all that. And also if there's any room for aesthetic, you know, be a little bit of a guardian of the, of the character of the town.
Thank you.
Kelly.
Hey, Mike.
Hi.
Um, are you familiar with the Town's Development Code and Comprehensive Plan?
I, I'm, I can't recite it point by point. Certainly since I've decided to apply for this position, I have been going through minutes and agendas and comparing all the comments with the, with the, with code and the standards. And also I've been involved in the construction industry off and on for almost the whole time that I've lived here. And so I'm also, you know, quite familiar with building codes. Certainly from a, a construction point of view and also from appearances with the, when we built Sisters Cabin, we had to comply with codes and appearances with Forest Service with their standards. So, yeah, I've, I've got some experience working, working with that stuff.
Thanks.
Dick.
Hey, Mike. Have you attended a planning commission meeting?
I have. It's been a while, but I have. And going through agendas and minutes is, is very interesting reading.
Second part of my question is then what have been your thoughts and observations of the meetings?
Um, that.
Process.
That the pro, you know, the process is, you know, there's a lot of different over the years. There's certainly a lot of different personalities and as the town has matured and gone into this phase of development. You know, we get to the point where I think most of our developers coming in or proponents coming in have a pretty good idea of, of what going to be expecting and after, in working with staff. So by the time, you know, they get to the, the planning commission, a lot of, a lot of what they are expecting or they understand is already kind of been in the process. And so, you know, it seems certainly very technical and with lots of architectural terms and concepts and stuff that I've got some experience with. So, I, you know, it's, it's there's always a story when you go back and you read through the minutes and stuff on, on all of these. And the archives is a really interesting read.
Great. Thanks, Mike.
Yeah.
Like, um, how do you think planning efforts are going in town? And then also any particular issues that you think the commission should be addressing?
Boy, that's a loaded question. I, I think the, the commission does its job by the, by the rules as they're set out. And so the planning commission, if they have any issues in mind, they can certainly make recommendations to council if they think that there are issues with height, you know, whatever the building standards are, whatever the architectural guidelines and so on, and landscaping guidelines and so forth. But, you know, really there's not a ton, if I'm reading this correctly, there's not a ton of, of, of room for interpretation on what you're doing. So you need to follow the rules and, and if you don't like the rules, then it's okay, I think, to maybe kick it up to and make some recommendations to council. As far as what's going on right now. You know, there's some things that like we're kind of stuck with, like, you know, setbacks, like the scrapes on, on Goldflake. Where you've got these buildings just going right up to the lot lines or pretty close to the lot lines. You know, that's just, that's the way the rules are written and or on, I'm on the Wellington HOA and we had a proponent wanting to do a bonus room, but it's obviously a full-time dwelling, but the way that the rules are written, they followed all the standards and we as the HOA had to override the design review committee. Because there was just no way that we could have denied them with the way that the rules are written. So that's I think it's our job to, to make sure that the rules and standards are followed.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep.
Great. Mike, thanks. Anything you'd like to add?
Um, you know, I think most of you guys know this. I probably talked to you, but for most, most of my career with Summit Huts, it was very consuming job. And I just, I, all the years that I was involved with the formation of the trails and open space and all the other things I was involved with meant a lot to me. And I kind of stepped back for that because I didn't feel like I had the bandwidth to do anything else well. And now I have bandwidth and I would really want to serve the town. The town means a lot to me. So that's pretty much it.
Excellent. Mike, thank you for applying. Thanks for showing up today and we'll make a decision tonight and let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Did you jack up your chair? Jeffrey's not here to lower it on you. Hey, Ian. Welcome, Ian. Thanks for applying. We'll begin with a question from Jay.
Hi, Ian. Have you applied for any town board commission or committee in the past?
I have. I applied for BOSAC. I served, I think, about three years on BOSAC. And I've applied for planning, I believe, once. Perhaps eight years ago or so.
Thank you.
Why are you seeking appointment to this board? What's your interest in serving?
Um, I think that says it right there. I soon turns out I like serving. I got elected to my HOA board a couple bunch of years ago now. Since stopped that. And then when I did planning commission, I'm sorry, when I did BOSAC, I found out that I really enjoy this kind of stuff, I guess would be a good way to put it. I don't really, I can't say as I have any sort of agenda or desire to change anything. I just really like the process and, and enjoy learning new things, I guess. Ian, pull the mic a little closer to you when, when you're talking.
Ian, are you familiar with the Town Development Code and Comprehensive Plan?
Depends on definition of familiar. Yes, I know that it exists and, you know, I've glanced at it in the past and recently, of course, for this, but I, I understand why it exists and I understand that a lot of effort has gone into crafting a good one. And from what I can tell, it is a, a solid code or whatever, but yes, I am vaguely familiar with it.
Thanks.
Dick. Hey, Ian. Have you attended a planning commission meeting?
Yep, I was here just this last week. And then previous to that, I've been here, I guess randomly over the many decades I've been in town a couple of times when I had personal interests and other times just out of curiosity.
And what were your thoughts and your views of the, of the meeting and the process?
Um, I thought it was interesting. I I appreciate the fact that it's very like defined, you know, like my HOA board was very undefined, of course. BOSAC is a little bit more in between and I really appreciated, you know, that it was, it was, it's very set. There's a procedure and, you know, that the code, of course, backs up the whole thing so that the, the process and the review of the application is, you know, it's very code-based. It's very set. And honestly, that's kind of how my personality runs anyway, is I like things more organized.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Yep.
Ian, thanks for being here. Um, how do you think planning efforts are going in town in general? And then the second part of that question is any particular issues that you think planning commission should be addressing?
I think they're going well. It's a, you know, particularly as things have sped up over the last decade or so and particularly over COVID, it's certainly challenging, but I think that the code is, is well crafted. I don't, in the times that I've been involved or just watched, it seems like it's had largely had answers for everything and it even just from a personal point of view, like aesthetically, I like the way things, I guess you could say, look, I like the way it's operating. I don't, you know, I guess a little bit further on that, you know, years ago, when we first moved to town, they built a couple malls on Main Street, which I personally dislike, but I don't think that the current version of the code would allow that kind of, or building to look like that anymore, which I like. And then I'm sorry, what's the second part?
Um, it was, any issues that you think need to be addressed?
No. I don't. I would assume that if I was to get this seat, that perhaps things would come up. But I think that I understand from having been around it a bit that, you know, it's not up to the planning commission to make the changes in the code. Perhaps to see changes that might be needed and then talk to council, I believe would be the, the way things like that work. But no, I don't have any issues with it at all.
Great. Thanks, Ian.
Welcome. Ian, thanks. Anything you want to add? Um, yeah, just again, back to the, I wanted to talk about myself just a little bit. I think that this is a, even though I don't have a ton of experience doing this kind of thing, I think it suits my personality and my strengths well. I do think that I'm very detail oriented. I like, I'm solution oriented and I really like to learn. Just in the time that, in this last two weeks or so that I've been thinking about this, I've learned a lot. I really I enjoy it. Awesome. Ian, thanks for putting your name in and we'll vote on this tonight, let you know.
Thanks.
Look forward to it. So, of course, we get two more. Hi, Ethan. I, down here, have a seat. We're not gonna make you stand with no mic shouted us.
How's everybody today?
Good. How are you?
Great.
Welcome. We're gonna start with Jay. A little closer to the mic just so picked up. Thank you. So we got to pick everything up.
Good afternoon, Nathan. Have you applied for any town board commission or committee in the past?
I have not.
Thank you.
Why are you seeking appointment to this board? What is your interest in serving?
Well, Carol, I've, I've played with the idea for years. I've always wanted to serve the community, community that's done so much for me, obviously. And it's finally time.
Thank you.
Um, Ethan, are you familiar with the Town's Development Code and Comprehensive Plan?
I am. I've been a builder here in Breckenridge for 30 years. I've worked extensively with the building and, and planning department on many, many projects. As some, if not most of you know, my ex-wife is Suzanne Allen Sable now, used to be Allen Garab. And we had a business together, Allen Garrett Design Build. We still work together extensively. And so yeah, we work together on many projects and still do. So I have a pretty deep understanding of the building and planning codes.
Thank you.
I know the answer to this first one, but I'll ask it anyway. Have you attended a planning commission meeting before?
I have.
Okay. And the second part. And what are your thoughts and observations and, you know, views of, of the process?
It's a good question. Dick. Understanding the way process works. As you all, as the council, you have to work within guidelines. And, and, and sometimes that's difficult, but that is, that is the way things are done. And it's, it's the same in the planning and, and, and specifically for me as a builder, I have to do that all the time. And it's, it's interesting. I hear people, many, many builders or especially homeowner builders complain about the process. Well, that rule's stupid or just on and so forth. And, and I've, and, and my response to that is it's, it's a, it's a, it's a code, it's a rule, it's, it's there for a reason. And, and we need to work within that. How do we do that? And to, to, to work seamlessly with the system. So my observations and, and in, in planning commission meetings is, is, is watching that process of how the planning staff works within those guidelines and, and the commissioners and then finally you guys and, and how all that comes together to, to, to to, to bring forth the, the best outcome, I guess, the best outcome within those guidelines. So does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you.
Hey, thanks for being here. How do you think planning efforts are going in town and are there any particular issues that you think the commission should be addressing?
I guess overall, I think that the again, Todd, going back to the, the guidelines, I'm, I'm a, I'm a very linear person that way. I look at, I look at things that way. So from my observations, the last number of years, I think that, that, that council and commission has done a really good job with some really tough issues over the years. You know, I come back to the Grand Timber project that was approved last year, wherever it is, here on the south, the north Gondola lots and, and the controversies around that. And I, I read about that and look at it and, and look at the, at the minutes and again, I think that, that it's, it's easy to hear all the noise outside of all the people making comments in, in, in our community, but, but coming right back to, to this somewhat narrow path of, 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 of the commission and, 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 and I think that, that the town has been on point.
Thanks. Ethan, thanks for applying.
Thank you, Eric.
Anything you want to add?
Um, just again, Eric, that I think that my, my years of being here, both as a community member working for the ski area. I know a lot of you. You, you guys know me. But also, but then that with my, my pretty deep knowledge of the, of the building. You, you guys know me, but also, but then that with my, my pretty deep knowledge of the, of the building process and, and planning process here, I think I have a lot to contribute and I'd like to do that.
Thank you, Ethan.
Thank you.
We'll vote tonight and let you know.
All right. Thanks, guys. Have a good one.
You okay, boss? Nobody screwed anything up yet? Yeah, it's a good thing, Jeffrey. We should just not invite him to these. How are you, Ace? Good. Thanks for applying. We've read your stuff and we have a handful of questions, starting with Jay.
Sure.
Yes, sir. Ace, have you applied for any town board, commission or committee in the past?
Yes, I've applied for the planning commission in the past and I also, I'm on the alcohol and marijuana authority.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Presently.
I appreciate that.
Why are you seeking appointment to this board? What's your interest in serving?
The interest honestly revolves around Breckenridge. I love Breckenridge. I was here a long time ago. In fact, it was kind of funny. I was reading the, read the, looked at the town code over the years and I think I knew five of the people that originally signed it, which is kind of scary. But I love Breckenridge. I'm looking as an opportunity to serve the town, to give back a little bit. Obviously to learn. The planning commission, what you guys, what they do has always interested me. So I'd like to learn more about it, get involved in the process. I don't have any hidden agenda. I'm not a developer or builder. I want to see town keep going the direction it has gone and to stay the Breckenridge that I loved long ago and I still love it.
Thank you.
Ace, you mentioned that you have a little bit of familiarity with the code. Do you feel pretty comfortable with it or how much experience do you have?
I don't have really much experience with it, but I am very comfortable with it. I'd like to think that I see things that are being done and understand why they're being done. And I also hear people all the time saying, these people don't know what they're doing when they're not informed. And another reason I would like to learn is so I can say, you know what, that's right. And this is what the purpose of this law is, or this is why they did that, or this is why they didn't do that. So I look at it as an opportunity to learn, I think is really important.
Great. Thank you.
Ace. Being here. Hey, have you attended a planning commission meeting in the past?
Not. No. Town council meetings I've attended, but this was obviously pre-COVID. I have watched a couple on Zoom and replayed a few of them.
Okay.
I have not physically attended any.
And, and what are your views and, and thoughts of the, of the meeting and the, in the process of the ones you viewed on Zoom?
I find it interesting. I also find it, a lot of times I see just things are, the process has already taken place and there's a lot of approvals. I also noticed sometimes they'll ask certain questions of the builder or the developer, why you're doing this or why can't this happen? This is what we asked you to do. I also have seen people make changes. Everything they were asked, people come back and said, the commissioner said, you've done exactly what we asked you to do. So again, it's just a, a process that I find interesting. But there's not a concrete example I could give you where I can grab onto and say, don't understand that or whatever.
Thanks.
Sure.
Hi, Ace. Thanks for being here. How do you think planning efforts are going in town and are there any issues that you think that the planning commission needs to address?
Well, I think the growth is one question that everyone is questioning. The BGV project for one thing is being asked all the time about why are they doing that when we're crowded as it is? But on the other hand, like I drove through the Alta Verde project not too long, two weeks ago and I was like, wow. Cause I hadn't been back there in months and I'm like, they're really moving along on this thing. And so I, I really have an interest in the employee housing efforts. And again, going back to learning, there's a lot that the town council and the town itself has done for years that most people have no idea they've done. And they don't, you guys don't get the credit you deserve from most people, in my opinion. So I think it's just monitoring the growth, controlling it and taking care of people that want to live here and work here. I think that's the biggest thing.
Thanks.
Sure.
Awesome. Well, thanks for applying, Ace.
You're welcome.
Anything you want to add?
Not really. Just that I'd be honored to serve. I mean, I, like I said earlier, I love Breckenridge.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. We'll make a decision tonight and let you know.
Okay, great. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Ace.
All right.
See ya.
Span the planning commission. Lot of great applicants. We're going to have one-on-one with the water attorney at 3:30. Is he here? Anybody know?
Oh, James. When will we talk about the candidates? Will that be tonight or? I mean, I know we do the official vote tonight, but just to kind of recap or talk, we'll do that at that point.
I mean, and you could probably have a little bit of discussion now. I mean, as long as we're having it, you know, it's a public discussion.
Yeah, we could. We can do it right now if you'd like.
We got time.
All right. Go ahead.
Well, for me, I thought Mike Zobi and Ethan demonstrated their, the strongest grasp of the, of the code. I, you know, I guess maybe the next question that is how important is that? I think it's pretty important. I, I, I think, you know, we need somebody that at least has a a grasp of, of the concepts of it as it, you know, as a, a variable code, you know, and, and really has observed it and observed it in a way that, that picked up on some of those nuances of the code. Cause it's a, you know, it creates a different process when you're analyzing it.
They're just having a discussion on the candidate.
You said we had a parking structure right up back.
You know, I, as, as I've read a lot of the code and working really hard trying to get up to speed from, from the council standpoint, it's a, you know, it's a lot. It's, it can be overwhelming. So those are my views.
I'd love to hear from, I'm, being that I haven't been on planning commission, I'd love to hear from Jay, just some insight on who he thinks might be a good fit and maybe even what's needed, you know, on the commission, some of those skills because there were a lot, you know, like Ian had a great grasp of the process and I think that that's very important is to understand following the code is, you know, your job. So I do feel like there are a variety of skills that are important.
Yeah. Thanks, Kelly. I just, it's funny because just coming right off of planning and watching, I think I watched five new commissioners be onboarded in my time there. And it's sometimes, you know, you, you watch their first day, they got their badge and a gun, right? And that they're here to, you know, sit down and I, I feel like the understanding that the commission's there to work with the applicant, not work against them. And it's not about policing. It's just like providing a very consistent, predictable interpretation of the code is so important for our community because the architects, the builders, the, the, the staff depends on the commission to stay somewhat like true, you know, have a true north and to be able to be consistent with their rulings. Cause the more, you know, when you see them all over the place, it provides this uncertainty that is very damaging to a building community. And so I, I do think that having an understanding of the process, as you stated, is, is critical. And to not be there to, to be confrontational, but to be partners with the applicants is such an underrated skill from my time on, on the commission and watching and, and seeing the most successful commissioners in working with the applicant to guide to a thing that, to an outcome that works within the code, works within precedent. And within that, I, I happen to agree with Dick and the fact that Mike and Ethan have, would have the shortest ramp up time. And I think that if I didn't have five or six years on upper blue planning commission, if I was walking into the door when I did, I still, I, I wouldn't have been up to speed even today. Like it is, and you've alluded to it multiple times on the learning curve is so steep and to have an idea of expectations about going through the process, understanding why things exist. I think is crucial.
Yeah, that's really helpful to hear. Thanks, Jay. And I think right after everyone learned first, I think we had great applicants and Mark, is this typical or was this a good?
This would be a real good.
Yeah. That's, that's incredible. And we had seven original applicants. So thank you for putting the word out how you did. And I hope that continues with all our commissions. But I think for me, clearly Ethan was the most intimately familiar with our code, working within it. Having the skill sets to look at a plan and understand it versus a rendering, just from having lived it so long from his experience. The others brought really great aspects. Ally clearly has great technical law, knowledge. Mike, I feel like he had good understanding of the process and more importantly, the role. I feel like a couple candidates truly understood the role. They're not here to, they could maybe suggest policy, but they're not here to create policy. They're here to interpret the code. And I think almost everyone came with a very community focused lens of why they wanted to serve and that's great. But for me, I really appreciated Ethan's background.
Yeah, I share your sentiments there on Ethan. He stands out head and shoulders above everyone, given his depth of, of relationships in the community as well as just the amount of times he's stood up here and worked through the process. I think that is really valuable. To me, these boards can kind of serve as almost two roles. I'm sure there's others. The main one being like, all right, here's this planning commissioner, OSAC or whatever it is where you're, 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 you're taking your expertise and you're adding value to that specific task. I also see it as an opportunity to grow future leadership. I think given the current makeup of planning commission person, I'd love to hear Jay, what you think and, you know, cause you've got more experience with planning commission than, than all of us, you know, would there be a lot of value added by having somebody with Ethan's expertise? Does it need expertise or is it an opportunity where you've got a lot of expertise on the board and you can grow folks in that, on that board? Does that question make sense?
Yeah, I, I would correct you that I, Eric definitely has much more experience on planning than I do. So let's set that right. You know, I, it's hard because you, this would be the third builder on the planning commission and, you know, how much slack did I take, you know, and the fact of, do we need three restaurant people on council, right? So I, I, I do think that if we were able to pick the perfect candidate out of the air, it would be someone like a Kristi Liddell that we lost that has actual planning experience. But I think that this would be second best and the fact that I don't, I, I see that being extremely valuable. That knowledge and that institutional knowledge is just, is hard to replace. And I, I, I've listened to, you know, Mark, Lee's and George speak at length and their technical understanding of building and why certain retaining walls work when others don't and the amount of disturbance needed and, you know, they're, they're there not to redesign projects to, but just to grade them on what is presented. And I think that is the weakness of having builders on the commission is that they'll see it and go, well, that doesn't make sense. You're, you have, you know, you, you're doing three switchbacks where if you just remove the garage in front, then you only need two. But that's not the point of the commission. The point of the commission is say, given the plan you've presented, this is the point analysis that we think is correct. And so I think that, that would be a weakness.
I think personally I value the, especially for planning, the 75,000 hours of expertise and retaining walls and driveways and switchbacks and living and breathing that stuff is where I'm sitting.
You know, I want to actually get to your question about grooming the next sort of group. There was a time in, there was a time in Breckenridge and it wasn't that long ago when if you didn't serve on planning commission, there's no way you got on council. And everybody on council was very intimate with way the planning commission operated. And then there was a time when there was at least one councilman, that was a board that you sat on, you sat on planning, but Tim Berry hated that because of the conflict when you went into call up. So we, we did away with that and there's, you know, I, I would say that there has been some loss of knowledge at the council level about planning because we don't do that anymore, which I'm super glad that Jay got elected because he brings that, because a lot of what we do as a council is planning. So to, you know, potentially bring, bring a group of people in that could then run for, for the council seat, I think is a great way to look at it. But town has evolved beyond that now too. That, that's not really, it's not needed like it used to be. Cause that was, I mean, that was it, man. You weren't on council, you're not getting elected. I, I will say that these, I, any one of these people I think would do a fantastic job. I think they all understand the process. I, I think they understand that the code is as important as it is. So I don't think we can go wrong with anybody. And you know, the, the vote will be what it is tonight. I, I am just, I wish we could expand it by five people because I think everybody would, would bring their own little things to the planning commission that, you know, while we do always talk about code and precedent, there's still little opportunities in planning to push stuff up to the council. And when I was on planning, that, that group I sat on, which was Dave Pringle and Herman Herring and, and Ken Bose, we got the council to rewrite a ton of the code. I mean, there was a time when if you paved your driveway, you got a point. If you paid to have a semis, the stones in the cemetery cleaned, you got a point. So that group was great in pushing stuff to council. We don't get a lot of that anymore. And I, you know, I think there are times that, that, that the planning commission needs to know that because they're the experts on that, they're the ones that should be pushing stuff to us like ADUs. They should not wait for us to make those kind of, those kind of policy moves. That'd be great if they would do that kind of stuff, but I'm, I'm going to be happy with anybody. I, I, I'm going to wait till the end and just vote. I can even, you know, I'm going to think about this through the rest of the day. So awesome. Great job, gang. It was good.
All right, we're going to jump into.
Now we have our esteemed water attorney.
That would be you.
You, mister. Glenn, it is great to have you live. It's awesome to see you.
Just ask that you kind of talk into the mic a little closer. So if anybody's listening online, they can pick.
We had some people on Zoom, so.
Well, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and Town Council. We have a, a real privilege this afternoon to have our water council here to give us a presentation on our water portfolio. Glenn Porzac has been our water council for, we're trying to compare now, I think about 35 years and, and so he is the individual that knows our water portfolio inside and out and all the inter- synchronicities of our system and water. We've, we've had a number of water discussions already today and we're going to have a few more later in this meeting. But with that, I'm going to let Glenn take over. We do have a PowerPoint that's going to kind of to follow along with and it will be fairly quick and then there'll be some room at the end for some Q and A. So thank you.
Thanks so much. It's great to see all of you.
Thanks so much. It's great to see all of you. Given the length of time that that I've been privileged to serve as water council. And then also I want to mention Tom Williamson, who's been your water resource engineer, I think longer than that, actually. We decided that since unfortunately, we're not getting any younger. We needed to really sit down and and prepare a comprehensive report. And so we worked on that together. I understand that maybe that's been given to you. But what we tried to do was was literally. Put in one document, you know, all the different water rights that you own. All the different water agreements that you have out there. I mean, there's been so many different agreements over the over the years. Which water rights are absolute and I'll explain that in a moment and which ones are conditional. And 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 then what kind of commitments you you not only serve the town, but you've also entered into commitments over the. Over the years, I I I've quipped on this that the town of Breckenridge, you've you've heard this one that. The town of Breckenridge is the Denver Water Board of the Upper Blue River. I mean, you literally, you know, command much of the flow. And it's also interesting that you you sit between. You know, Denver to the north and to the south Colorado Springs, you know, two big water users. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to that in in a moment. So in in order for this report maybe to make sense. I want to just go very quickly through. I'll call it Water Law one oh one. Colorado has the prior appropriation doctrine doctrine and it's it's one of it. That's the. Predominant doctrine in the western states, but color is probably the most pure. Prior appropriation doctrine and what that means is first in time, first and right. There's no preference for municipalities versus. Other users, whoever has the most senior water rights. Gets their entitlement before anybody else. And I I want to just illustrate this because there's kind of two important points. And I have two fictitious or this fictitious stream, if you will, to illustrate the priority system. And there's kind of now two key days. One's your appropriation date. That's the date when you first went out, maybe started. Work in the field to dig a ditch or doing something. Passing a council resolution that you're going to. Appropriate certain amount of water and the other is adjudication date. That's a date. The calendar year in which you made your filing. It doesn't matter whether you filed January first or December thirty first. That's why, you know, what 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 is the busiest day in the post office is a day before tax or date of taxes. It's the same as the last business day of the calendar year is when you jump in and and file in water court. Because people don't want to disclose when they're going to do it. So i- if you can see, I've got four fictitious water rights. Obviously, the senior most one has both the senior appropriation date and the senior adjudication. That may maybe surprise is what's number two and what's number three. Look, look at number two. Came in fifty years later and started their appropriation than number three, but they got into water court first. So that that's that's the key. The only thing that's important with regard to the appropriation date is on water rights that are filed in the same calendar year. And that the tie is broken by the water user that initiated their appropriation. But now I've superimposed these four water rights on a stream to illustrate one other point other than the seniority. Let's say that, let's say there's just twenty second feet of water in the stream. And 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 that's the appropriation for number number one. Well. Number two would have to bypass the entire flow. To allow number one to get to its entitlement. But let's say number one is is a municipality and so it has a lot of return flows. And so. Number four and number three could literally live off of all of those return flows and that's really important. So what I'm trying to illustrate here is that. You have, what do they say? The the three most important things in real estate are location, location, location. You also have to look not only at your priority, but you have to look at where you are in relation to other senior water rights. So that's the point that I just wanted to make with that. Let's go to the next one. Now, who administers water rights? It's a state engineer and then the state engineer, the the state's divided into seven water divisions. That correspond with the the main river systems and we're in division five here. That's the main stem of the Colorado River. And that headquarters is in Glenwood Springs. And then there are seven division engineers. They're they're appointed by. The state engineer and 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 the state engineer is pointed by the governor. And and so they basically, they're they're the chief traffic cop, if if you will, with regard to water rights. And so. And then under the division engineers is multiple, what they call a water commissioners. That that literally go, you know, the day that you could kind of. Steal water or get away with with water. Those are long gone. I mean, it's now, you know, with all the technology, what have you. But maybe most important is if you're if you're diverting that you're not in water that you're not entitled to. It's a good bet that your neighbor will be the first one to report that. Now, how do you obtain a water right? You you form an intent. And then you file for that water right in one of the seven water. Special water courts and those correspond to the seven major drainage areas. And then water rights are decreed as either conditional or absolute. And anybody, even if they don't have water rights, can oppose an application. I would also mention that that usually there's there's a water judge and typically it's not always the case. But that's maybe the senior district judge in in a given division. And and again, the water court in for the Colorado River Basin is in. Glenwood Springs. One of the interesting things about Colorado is that. An appeal from the water court. Bypasses all the intermediate courts of appeal and goes right to the Colorado Supreme Court. I could be wrong on this, but I think there's only one other area of law that has an appeal. As a matter of right directly to the Supreme Court. I think that's a death penalty case. So it it does show you that long ago, the importance that water was given in in the state. Now, okay, I'm going to talk about absolute versus conditional. Absolute are water rights that have been. Decreed, but also fully utilized. So the only way you can really lose them is if you 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 don't use it. Ten years of non-use is a statutory presumption, but you know, there's times when it's gone twenty, thirty years and you still. If you don't have the intent. It's it's hard to abandon a water right. The conditional rights, however, is where you go in, you get a decree, you want to stand in line and preserve your priority date. But you haven't put the water right to beneficial use yet. Nowadays, you have to come in. Six years, it's six years from the last decree. So if you file for conditional water, you have a conditional. Water right, you haven't diverted the water yet or haven't diverted all of the water. You you come in and then let's say it takes two, three years to get your finding of diligence and that allows you. To continue the water right, then it'd be six years from that date. So you actually get in that instance of nine years. But but ultimately, more and more, it's more and more stringent where people come in and oppose diligence. And, you know, it it it's it's more important to try and develop that water right as soon as as possible. And when you, the the next one is when when you go in. If you're if your water right has not been made absolute and you want to preserve it. And we're going to talk about this with respect to some of the towns conditional water rights. You have to show due diligence, basically that. You're you're moving forward in a reasonable time to develop the water right. That that's kind of the the key. If you don't, if you miss your deadline. Then. Automatically, it's the statute of limitations and and the water is abandoned. This is one of my great areas where I'm really nervous about is that I was actually. Litigated the case that went to the Colorado Supreme Court where I attacked somebody else's water right and they lost it because they didn't didn't meet the statutory. Deadline, so. That always gives me panic that somehow I'm gonna, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna come back to roost, you know, against me. One of the last things I want to talk about and then this makes some sense when we get to your water rights are tools of trade. You can change your water right if you don't cause injury. So, you know, let's say you 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 change your water right. That was an irrigation right. And that was historically many of the water rights, bless you, were irrigation rights and you want to change it to municipal. So what what you do is you look at the historic consumptive use and you can convert that. Long ago, you could get away and take a seasonal water right, which is agricultural and change it to a year round use. Those days are long gone. But basically you'll be limited to the season of use. So typical agricultural water right when it may. Maybe up in this area, you know, sometimes June to October. So so that's why storage is so important. Another is augmentation and we'll get into that in in a in a moment. And then the other thing is an exchange and we're going to talk about that and I I'm going to illustrate because the town has some real important. Exchanges. I I put this one up because, as I mentioned at the outset. You're situated between two major diverters, Denver and Colorado Springs. But the other reason is what they call the eighty twenty rule and that. Eighty percent of the water supply in the state is west of the continental divide. And yet you only have twenty percent. These are, you know, ballpark numbers of of the population. Eighty percent of the population is east of the continental divide and yet they have. Only twenty percent of the surface flows. That's why trans mountain diversions are so important. You know, Denver, obviously, one of the big trans mountain diversions is the Roberts Tunnel, Dillon Reservoir. Springs, you know, the the whole. Who's your pass system? They have other. Trans mountain diversions. Those are two main trans mountain diversion, but actually the biggest trans mountain diverter in the state. Is is the Northern Colorado Water Conservancy District, the Colorado Big Thompson Project. They take, just to give you an idea. They take. Two hundred and twenty five thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand acre feet annually. Compare that to Denver. Denver's actually, you know, they want to grow to about a hundred thirty thousand out of the Roberts Tunnel. But they're they're below that at this point in time. They also have their Mafa Tunnel in Grand County, but. But it just gives you perspective of how. How big that the what they call the Colorado Big Thompson Project, CBT, is but. The eyes are on. You and everybody, you know, other west up diverters because of this eighty twenty percent rule. I've kind of had a a schematic diagram of just kind of on on the side, but it it just shows you. The some some key features we're going to talk about in in a moment. Obviously, Dillon Reservoir and you now actually have Dillon Reservoir water and we'll talk about that. Clinton Reservoir, which is just below what Fremont Pat, just just below the. The climax mine there and you know, you you have your. You know, two two key, you're you're the new north treatment plant. Very important. And then the Gary Roberts Treatment Plant, which is right at at Goose Pasture Tarn. And and for years, that was your only source of treated water. And then obviously Goose Pasture Tarn and we could talk a little bit about the Upper Blue Reservoir and then. Something that will hopefully mature before I retire. And I have no plans right now, but I want to get this one done and that's the lower blue reservoir. And so it it just give you a little bit of a schematic of some of the key features. Obviously, another key diversion. You know, your your main diversion, and I'll talk about this in a moment, are at Goose Pasture Tarn. Or were, those were the major diversion, but with the with the north treatment plant, we've got a second. Key diversion, if you will, that basically comes right at the at the headwaters of of Dillon Reservoir, if you will. And then obviously, the other one is Maggie Pond, which is the snow making diversion, if you will. We'll go through this one, but this is, I I wanted you to also have it. That one just really shows where these features are. Superimposed over a real map. If we go the the next one. Yeah, and then and kind of flip that. I talked about an exchange and and really a classic exchange. Is what we'll call your Hill Ranch Benson Ditch. And and the 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 Hill Ranch is a big ranch. That, you know, was north of Dillon Reservoir, between Dillon and Green Mountain Reservoir effectively. Long ago, the town bought that ranch and and bought it for the water rights. And they they went in and quantified. What the historic consumptive use of that was as well as the Benson Ditch. There were two. Separate cases, if you will. And and then you went, it's really unique. There's a number of entities that have. Water with a contract water out of Green Mountain Reservoir. But you, I believe, are the only entity that has a storage contract. In other words, you have the right to store eight hundred acre feet of water in Green Mountain Reservoir. So you've got. It's a bucket, if you will. And so what happens is that in the in the summertime. During the time that there was the historic consumptive use of the Hill Ranch water and Benson Ditch. You basically store that in Green Mountain Reservoir. So that's now sitting in Green Mountain Reservoir. And then when it comes oddly enough in the winter months. You exchange that up to Goose Pasture Tarn and you have a decree that allows you to do that. Now, you might ask, why the heck, you know, are you gonna do the exchange up to Goose Pasture Tarn in the winter? Or you know, later in the season. And that the reason why was Denver said, we don't want you to interfere with our ability to fill Dillon Reservoir. So once Dillon goes out and stops storing, you could basically then take can command the flow. And take that water that would otherwise go to to Dillon Reservoir. So that that's just a a a classic. Example of an exchange. So. Goose Pasture Tarn is approximately eight hundred acre feet. And you have an underlying water right or series of water rights, but they're very junior water. But when you do this exchange, all the water that, you know, virtually all. That that's in Goose Pasture Tarn is very senior because you've taken this. Hill Ranch or Senior Water Rights and then move that up to. To Goose Pasture Tarn. So basically, the the all the 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 water that's in the tarn. Is very senior in nature and that's very, very key. Okay, now, so that's that's the end of Water Law one oh one. I I'm gonna get into.
Is that clear as mud?
Stop me anytime if you have any questions, but I I want to go to to this, this and this is. This is a graph or a chart that's in the water rate report that that we prepared. And this was a way in to kind of give. You know, a chart, if you will, where you could. You know, see all the different water rights and demands. You know, that would, you know, reduced to one page, if you will. But if, take a look at the upper right hand corner where it says primary municipal supply. Your main water right is what's called the Town Reservoir feeder ditch. And it's an eighteen eighty five priority. I mean, there's not many water rights, particularly upstream of Shoshone that are that senior. And and that's over the years has been quantified to be four point eight seven cubic feet of water per second. And what does that mean? It's basically three point one million gallons of water per day. That's your main municipal supply. Nobody's going to call you out. I mean, if you you don't need to augment it, it's so senior. It predates compact, you know, Colorado River Compact. You see so much of about the compact and then in the news. The Shoshone Water Right is nineteen oh two. It's not affect, doesn't affect this water right. And and it's it's, again, it is decreed for municipal. Um, and and it's it's again, it is decreed for municipal. The the point of diversion has been moved basically to 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 the Goose Pasture Tarn area. Uh, the Gary Roberts Treatment Plant. And and so this is just, you know, where the the mother load, I I guess, I I mean, it it there's. You you might say, why the heck you were able to get such a water right? And it it goes back to the mining roots of 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 the town. And uh, was, you know, one of the first uh, entities around. So um, that that's just so important. The rest has been adding on to that. And 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 this chart basically says, okay, who who do you owe water to for the other water rights that you've developed? You have to pay certain homage to Denver for transporting water through Dillon from from the Hill Ranch up to to Dillon Reservoir. Um, you 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 acquired the um, Blue River Water District, you took over that service area. You acquired some of theirs and then you had some of your own windy gap water. And that's water that's out of Grand B Reservoir that we do same exchange and move that up to Goose Pasture Tarn. And um, so you have a multiple sources. You you've got golf course, obviously, that that uh, we've developed a water supply for. And then you've entered into contracts to provide, you're the main source of supply uh, for the for snow making for the Breckenridge Ski Area. Um, and and you've you've provided two sources of water. One is three hundred acre feet of water out of uh, Goose Pasture Tarn. And then you give them the the ability, like that Green Mountain Contract, to store some of their own senior water in uh. Uh, in in the tarn, so another hundred acre feet. Just as a as an aside, they have a senior water right called Lusher Ditch. You know, if if you come into to Frisco and you get off the highway and and you see, um, what is it, the Safeway Store there often, right? And there's kind of big hotel and it says Lusher Court. That's where the Lusher Ditch used to be years ago, and that was the water that they accorded and moved up. There's just under a hundred acre feet, it was nine, I think ninety-six acre feet. But the and then you you entered over the years into some more small water sales. And then um, there's a um, big story to this. But uh, Robin Thee Ball has the right to six point two two four acre feet, whi- which I don't think he he actually uses her, but he has that contractual right. Um, and and then um, we've always earmarked and taken a hundred consumptive acre feet. It's a lot of water. Say, you can't touch it. That's that's a municipal contingency. You know, that that's for you to decide however that you might uh, want to use it. But we just kind of, you know, it's almost like a savings account, we put that off to the side. But when all of a sudden done, you have just over three hundred and eighty acre feet. Of kind of senior water that you own. That that's kind of consumptive, what I'll call consumptive use credits, senior water. And then you have just over four hundred acre feet of unused storage, if you will. And and you can see in this chart, you've got obviously Goose Pasture Tarn. To put these numbers in perspective, that's eight hundred acre feet. You've got the Upper Blue Reservoir, where you have fifty acre feet out of that. Sawmill Gulch, just if you can visualize that, it's 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 like thirty six, almost thirty seven acre feet. Very senior, by the way. Uh, your golf course ponds are just over fifty-two acre feet. You have a hundred and fifty acre feet out of Clinton Reservoir, very important. And then you you uh, through an agreement, um, uh, the town has a hundred and eighty acre feet out of uh, Dillon Reservoir water. Now, we we use that for various purposes, uh, for example, the the Clinton Reservoir and um, uh, Dillon Reservoir. They're men of two of your main sources of augmentation water, along with some of the Hill Ranch water. Uh, to so that the the diversions into the north treatment plant will never be shut or will not be shut down. So, and that's really, that's really important. I can't emphasize enough. That the the fact that you have two different systems and and that redundancy, if you will. Um, for 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 both of those. I I don't look at at these two, the three eighty-one and the the four ten. Um, as additive. I I look at the fact that, well, basically, you you've you've you you have some four hundred plus acre feet of surplus storage. That you you, if necessary, you could use uh, uh, some of those other three hundred and eighty-one to to put in the in the storage. Uh, facility so that any storage water is going to be very senior in 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 priority. So what what, you know, kind of, um, you know, what what's maybe the, what's the the net result of this? From a water rights standpoint, the town's in great shape. You you literally, um, you 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 have enough to provide. If 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 the council were to decide that it was going to take over a service of other, you know, other developments. Or smaller air areas or pockets of use or whatever, um, or anybody else wanted to get out of the water business. You 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 could, you would have that ability to to do that wi- within reason. Um, so you you can meet all your own existing needs, plus, you know, something future. I also believe that that, you know, everybody's worried about, okay, how are things going to change over time? Uh, with with uh, you know, changes in climate. Even if we get into prolonged dry spells, I I think you've got enough of a surplus. You know, assuming that there's water in the river, um, you you know, you're you're going to have the ability to to meet your your demands. I would also say you you have the ability, if for some reason, and I think this is probably the most important. If kind of the 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 times of year, you know, then one of the changes that I see maybe over time is. Is is the ski season going to change over time? Is it snow season, you know, you know, going to be altered? Um, you you could step up and and uh, and and meet any change in demand, if you will, if 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 that was your pleasure. So um, that that's kind of the 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 long and short of it is. If if you're in a very envious position in that regard, um, you know, notwithstanding you. Standing your neighbor to the north and to the south, um, but um. Uh, you you know, the still, if there's opportunities and we're going to, you know, when when we did this report, the the one thing that's missing in there. Uh, is the fact that, because we don't have an agreement yet, although I believe we're close to it. Is an agreement uh, over the uh, I'll call the Lower Blue Reservoir. It's a reservoir just uh, obviously below Upper Blue Reservoir. Um, and um, that's an arrangement where ultimately, if you decide uh, to to move forward on that. It'll be six hundred acre feet. Again, compare that to the tarn, eight hundred acre feet. You're going to be in fifty fifty position with uh, uh, the Summit County. It's Summit County gets three hundred, you get would get three hundred. Uh, you'll you'll obviously operate the reservoir, you know, they they don't have the the capability really to do that. That's, you know, um, you you know well how to how to do that. You might say, well, with with all all of this, why would we need more storage? In my mind, you can't have enough storage or or it it's, maybe there are situations where you'd have enough stores. But I that that's the one. And, you know, keep in mind that if 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 we get three hundred acre feet, look at that three hundred and eighty-one acre feet number. You know, we we're we're going to get some water from uh, Colorado Springs. Uh, but but also, we're going to exchange, you you know, if you decide to go forward with this, we'd exchange some of our other water up there. And 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 make sure that 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 uh, three hundred acre feet was a reliable supply. And it's it's great because it's not only storage, but it's in your headwaters, if you will. And that that that's always important. Um, e- even if you were to decide, okay, we don't need it right now, we're going to save this, you know, for the future. But you you want to main, you 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 want to keep uh, for aesthetic or other reasons or recreation reasons. You want to keep more flow in uh, you know, the 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 Blue Rivers that goes through the town. You know, obviously, we'd have that that ability, so uh.
Glenn, that's not, remind me that, it's not a new three hundred acre feet of water rights, right? It's just storing or the ability to store more.
It's to store more water, but um, hey, that. We're going to get some amount of water from the the town, but not enough necessarily to necessarily fill the hole. But I'll call the six hundred acre feet. Um, but um, we'll get into that when we find an agreement. Well, you know, I'm certainly going to request a a complete study session on on that one. But it's, you know, none of these storage facilities are cheap, but this is way cheaper than any other alternative. And that that's the main reason why this is so attractive, both from that standpoint and uh, and then also the the location, you know.
See that this year?
I certainly hope so. You know, we're down to some very minor issues that that are important.
Understand what he's talking about?
No.
Okay. So, Upper Blue Reservoir is up by Quandary.
Yeah, below country.
Glenn has been working on a new reservoir right below that, that would, we would be a party to with the county.
Yes, and and let me just say, the the reason why Upper Blue is. It's a nice facility, but the problem is they, Color Springs owns it. They shut it down in the winter months because of avalanche danger. You you know, we've tried to go to him and say, yeah, just don't get me going on that one, anyway. Lower Blue is just down, i- in fact, if if you look at the this map, you can actually see it. It 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 actually shows you Upper Blue Reservoir and then where Lower Blue is. It's not that much distant, but um. Yeah, it the 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 key there is, it it actually, there's a little bit of storage there right now. I think the um, the Summit County owns some of that land. Uh, I think some of it's on Forest Service land, that's going to be, uh, you know, the, you know, one of the issues that we'll have to deal with. Um, but um, a- again, that that's, it's going to be in a really good location. And and you you might say, I I should mention. Colorado Springs is going to pay fifty percent of the cost of developing that s- storage facility. Yeah, I know you're you're saying, why the heck would they, but let let's just, let me finish this. They would pay fifty percent of the cost and you pay twenty-five percent, the county, the other twenty-five percent. That's the 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 proposal. They want something out of this. They, Colorado Springs wants to enlarge what's called Montgomery Reservoir. That's just over the divide, you know, that's over in, uh, what is, is that Park Park County or Lake County? I can never remember. Park County, okay, that that's over on the other side. Um, they want a ten forty-one permit from Summit County to be able to take some of their water rights. Uh, that they already have and and move it over. Um, they're 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 going to be take taking water and store it in exceptionally wet type years. I, from our standpoint, you know, and James and I have been talking about, I, from the town standpoint, we don't think that's a big issue. Because they're they're only going to be able to store it when there's literally surplus water in the spring. Um, but but anyway, that they 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 want something out of it. And as part of that, uh, it's it's to build us this this reservoir, if you will, or at least pay for part of it. Provide some storage water and and whatnot, so.
Well, it's been like three or four years.
Yeah, it it is, it it's now down to some biometric limits that they're not the town's issues. It it's the Colorado River District who's party to this and they're they're stuck on that issue. Uh, what's the other issue? There's one other issue, I just kind of forgot. Anyway, there's this volumetric is is one of the big ones. That, yeah, a- and we're we're kind of in a position of, we're almost sitting there, okay. Come on, River District, let's let's get this done. Uh, you know, sometimes uh, on these water deals, timing's up. Timing's essential. You don't want to let it let drag on too much longer. So hopefully, we'll be here before the end of the year to do that. So um. Shoot away, I had questions, but uh, but you you know, again, I want to emphasize the tack. You you're in a very envious position. Um, and and you you've got flexibility in terms of what you may or may not want to do in terms of, you know. Meeting future snow making demand, municipal demand, those kind of things. Water, maybe the best way of putting it, water is not your constraint in terms of your decision making. Your decision making is going to be more governed by, you know, what you want to do from a land use standpoint.
It's also a very good bargaining chip. Oh, you all are aware of that we use. Things like annexations, there are different things like that where people want, need need water. Cause I don't really understand the whole well water situation, but that's.
Yeah.
I know, it's pretty complex. It takes about ten times hearing this to understand a little bit of what he's talking about. This is really one of the most important things. We don't talk about it much. Because there's really not much to do, and Glenn has done such an amazing job over the years. This is a super important part of what council sort of has in the bag, to know that you you have water. Everything they talk about at Lake Mead and Lake Powell really doesn't really affect us. Building a reservoir above us, a bigger reservoir is a big deal for that very reason. You're not talking about a paper transfer, I mean, you are, but there'll be wet water there right above you that you don't have to pump. Like we do with water to the uh, to the north plant. So this is a super important topic, and so any question's a good one. And Glenn is, Glenn's the man. He knows more than anybody.
Glenn, if um, if any, say, Lake Dillon or or uh, Montgomery or, you know, got compromised. The water quality got compromised from, say, forest fire or something. Is there ever a situation where they tried to take so much of our water? Where you would be concerned, or or just how would that work?
Um, they might try, but they wouldn't have the ability to do it. I mean, we'll 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 be in the court, you know, very quickly uh, on that. Uh, they they would have no municipal preference in that regard. Uh, but but you you mentioned one important thing, and that's the redundancy where you have both the north treatment plant and and the Gary Roberts Plant. You know, up at the tarn, that's uh, that that's critical. I mean, I guess you could have a catastrophic fire or, you know, it it would affect both. But but that's that's really, really key.
Cause North comes from Sawmill, right? The other side of the valley, is that correct?
Say again.
Source of the uh, north water treatment plant, is that, I mean, those sources are completely separate, right?
They are. I mean, literally, your point of diversion is it it it's what I call is uh. Almost a high water line of Dillon Reservoir. It's near there, so you're taking it out of Dillon or or near there, you know, you're obviously taking out of the stream. But but kind of that location, so it's it's uh, it's 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 all Upper Blue. But it's it's, keep in mind, there's a lot of inflow between Goose Pasture Tarn. And the north treatment plant where we've got water coming in from other sources. So.
That point he's talking about is that there's a, if you get ready to drive up Swan, there's the sand district. And then there's a newer little building there, that's our diversion point. So it is right at the edge of Dillon. So it's in the stream, but it's right at the reservoir.
That's right.
So you capture everything all the way down the the reach of of the valley.
So you can't think of any possible scenario where where our physical water would be compromised?
No, no, I mean, I think the big, yeah, the big thing is 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 some kind of catastrophic fire. I I mean, that that that's nature, I mean, but um, no, I I mean, you're. Your your situation is, you know, you really covered yourself in that that regard. And you have, you know, various water rights that, you you know, where the, you know, years ago, the council went up and bought the the. The Hill Ranch and the Benson Ditch and and moved it up. Um, I mean, those kind of things, I think, would not be possible. Um, today, you you know, to to do it. And that's, that's why I it's so important to jump on something, you know, when, you know, if if the opportunity is is there. So uh, um. You know, I, when when you said something, you know, I I kind of said, well, we'd be in court really quickly. I had to to smile and think about it. That that's when, what was it called? The dredge restaurant? We had to go into court on that one. I remember getting a call saying, could you, you know, let's get up here and litigate that issue real real quick, but.
Well, appreciate all your help over the years and the explanations. It's it's a lot to try to grasp for a layman.
Yeah, just curious, and I apologize. This is wonderful stuff, and I'm super new to it. Is there an opportunity for us as a town to monetize, like in the short term, any excess water we're not using, but also protect that right? So we're not giving away the right?
That's a great question. And and I think there is a way to monetize it. Let's just take. Let's just say, take four hundred acre feet. Let's not be additive. And I would say, well, let me put it this way. Clinton Reservoir sold, there was a transaction between A Basin and Copper Mountain ski areas were some of of the Clinton water, which is further down. It's not as good because it's not right on the, it comes into Dillon, if you will, but it's on Ten Mill Creek. Thirty five thousand dollars an acre foot. That was a long time ago. I I've seen estimates of anywhere, you know, probably the rule of thumb we use is forty thousand dollars an acre foot. But I think that's probably low. I mean, I I've seen some appraisals that, you know, are as high as sixty thousand an acre foot of storage water, senior storage water. So I I don't have a calculator handy, but but take take four hundred and multiply it times, you know, thirty thousand an acre foot or, you know, forty thousand. It's 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 an enormous dollar amount, if you will.
And that's that would be on a sale of that four hundred acre foot, like in perpetuity, or is that?
Sure. Yeah. Perpetuity.
And we sell, we sell water sometimes in excess to the ski area. Snowmaking when they use more than their allotted amount. We have an agreement with them.
Then I think where I'm going that.
That's not giving up our water.
That's not giving up your water. What what are we close to five hundred dollars an acre foot now? And that's an annual.
So annually, it'd be five hundred bucks an acre foot if we had excess water and we were trying to fund, say, a housing project.
Or, yeah.
But, you know, somebody was there. I, you know, I I would hope that you wouldn't sell any of your water, but you know, that's your choice.
That's where I'm going. West gets drier. That opportunity will present itself.
Let me put it this way. I I've been practicing a long time. I do not recollect a time when water has gone down in value. So it's going to get nothing more. You know, water is the scariest commodity with an ever expanding demand. And it's it's one of the few commodities that's essential. You could do without a lot of things. But one of the things you cannot do out, do without is water. You know, just just, you know, physically, you know, you have to have water, but also just to do any kind of development, if you will. It it's really that that essential commodity.
Yeah. Other questions? Ask it. No dumb questions here, man. This is this is difficult stuff.
When when you speak of excess capacity as far as going into the lower blue. Is there, you know, you you speak of the conditional versus absolute. Do any of our water rights turn conditional? If it's excess supply that we're not actively utilizing, is that a risk of any sorts?
Well, you have some conditional water rights, and one of the things we categorize, I mean, you know, I would urge you at some point in time, you know, to to spend a little bit of time that the the report, what is it, twenty one pages? But but the key factors in literally reduced to what is it, almost two pages? It's page two and three is an executive summary. And then the the last, I think it's the last page is it literally is is a conclusion. Yeah, it's it's called Water Demands, Water Supply and Surplus Supplies. That that's in a nutshell. So literally, you could read three pages of this. And and it would give you the most important aspects. But but one of the things to 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 respond to your question is that what we did is we took all the conditional water rights that you have that and 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 show what are those? And when is the next finding of diligence due and whatnot? You know, I I would say some of them will make absolute over time. But I I don't view any of those water, your conditional water rights as super important. I mean, I won't admit that outside this room, you know. But I mean, it you're you're not going to, it's it's not going to be dependent, you know, or cause any problems with with, you know, doing what you want to do from the standpoint. So, yeah, you've got you've got them, but but I don't think they're in my mind, really critical, if you will. Well, I I think we'll make over time, what I'll call, there's the Birkenridge Pipeline and the first enlargement, which divert at the North Treatment Plant. We'll we'll want to make that, you know, more of that absolute as time goes on. So that's one of the ones. There's a couple of key ones like that. But 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 that that's one that we would want to make absolute for certain. Yeah, so but in in any event, I I think, you know, I I I thought it was real important, and and so did Tom Williamson, that we really tried to catalog. Boy, it was interesting expert, you know, going back all these years to try and amass all the different agreements and going back through the years and and make sure we got everything that was covered and have it in one book, you know, or in one one report, if you will.
So kind of along that same line as Jay's asking, I think you sort of answered this, but do we have any next steps? Like, are there things that you feel like are pressing issues besides, obviously, the lower blue is something that you're trying to wrap up? But what else besides that should we be paying attention to?
I I'd say two things. One is to try and get through and and get Goose Pasture Tarn, you know, spillway and and dam, you know, get that done. I mean, that's a little bit out of you know, the legal realm, if you will, but hopefully, there's nothing of legal that comes of that, but it I I I think everyone is going to breathe a sigh of relief once that's 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 done. I'd say the other thing is, and that it's after your question. Monitoring whatever the people are doing to make sure that nothing they might be doing will in any manner adversely impact your water rights situation. That that's really key. There's a thing called the Water Resume that comes out every month. And and we'll look at it to see what what new filings there might be. I think that's a that's really important. There is one other thing. There the Clinton Reservoir has the ability to enlarge because of because of the spillway. It's a spillway enlargement and any modifications spillway. You're not actually increasing the height of the dam because that's the highway. But with the spillway, you can create an up to five hundred acre feet. The reservoir company, which you're a shareholder, is going to go to four hundred seventy three acre feet. And you'll get a portion of that. And that's going to be important because we'll use that in in my mind as augmentation water or replacement water for your North Treatment Plant diversions. So that that's what that's really cheap water. In fact, that's one of these projects where the construct, the the biggest cost is the permitting. You know, wetlands and all, you know, the other stuff. That, you know, it's like for the whole acre feet, it's two million dollars. That's the current price of which you're only going to pay a fraction of that, but most of that's permitting. So but but again, that's do the math on it. You can see how cheap that extra bucket is. And as part of the Colorado River Cooperative Agreement with Denver, Denver agreed to make that firm your yield. So so that's that's important. So those are kind of some of the things that maybe keeping keeping track of. But maybe the biggest thing other than the lower blue reservoir, what we call a lower blue reservoir, is you know, finalizing the Clinton deal and and enlargement and and just making sure that nothing's going on that would in any way, shape or form adversely impact your situation.
Other questions? Well, I hate to bring this up, but what what are we doing for succession planning?
I don't know.
Glenn's the one that knows all this stuff. And, you know, when he retires one day, we're going to be standing around like.
Let me put it this way. There's plenty of good people out there, you know, good lawyer. If if you decide you want to make a change, or I I'm making any kind of thoughts of retirement, which which you know, I I'll be seventy four this year. Yeah, you know, but I I'm enjoying it. You know, I'm not maybe I'm not not working as long of hours. I'm not billing as many hours, let's put it that way. But but there's certain certain clients that I really have enjoyed. Obviously, the town is one of them. And 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 so two things, if if it's getting to that point, you know, I'll I'll let you all know. And and we'll we'll figure out somebody, but I'll be there, you know, assuming I don't, you know, drop over one of these days, which is always, you know, anyway. You know, I'll be there, you know, as to help out, you know, and and make any transition smooth. But that was also one of the reasons I we were real nervous, you know, because, you know, Tom is, Tom is, you know, he's talking about retirement more and more and and whatnot. And and so I I started to think, wow, you know, here, you know, you're fantastic water resource engineer, and I'm not getting any younger. And we we really, first of all, put into one document all the background. And then, you know, maybe in this next couple of years, we'll start talking more seriously about, okay, who is it that should be, you know, groomed, if you will, and, you know, and I don't know that you would you would ever want to, there's a need to to take a water lawyer in house or say, I don't know that there's enough work with that, you know.
We don't need any more in-house.
No, I I I mean, there's just not that much, you know, that that's critical and to do. So I I just don't see that as a as a a need, if you will.
Right.
That's a true statement. Most bigger jurisdictions will have that, but not.
Yeah.
I I just wanted to say, Rick said this, and Kelly asked the question. I think the one takeaway I have for council is the bargaining position is put to it. And I think we might forget that at times, how much power this gives you in certain of the big players. So that that would be it.
Very definitely, very definitely.
Other questions?
Thank you so much.
As usual, thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mike.
Awesome.
Good to see you.
It's great to see you, Glenn. Thanks, Glenn.
Mention just one little fact that don't know, for those of you who don't know Glenn, he's actually an accomplished mountain climber alpinist. He's been on the Summit of Everest, and I believe he's been on this the other six highest peaks in. Climbing as much anymore.
Hit by a bus, he's going to fall off the mountain.
It was a different era, you know, I kind of looked at. If I could say one thing, and that, do you remember a couple of years ago, there was that picture going to the Summit of Everest, and it was that whole strip of people? And and my son, it was great. All of a sudden, I I get this thing, and he had that picture. And then almost taken from the same spot, the picture, you know, going to the summit on our expedition years ago, and you could see one person. And and I that to me, I always thought, all right, pretty cool.
You went at the right time.
Yes, absolutely. It was, like I said, it was a different era and and it just, it was fun.
That's cool. For the end of the year.
Absolutely. Yeah. Real trouble, you know.
Thanks, Glenn. Thank you. All right, gang, let's.
I think we can go through legislative pretty fast if you want to.
We take five. Yeah, let's take five. And then we'll come back. Thank you. Todd can.
You did. Yeah, me too.
Good with it. I'm not afraid. All right, we are back with work session. And moving on to legislative review. Ordinance updating Clean Indoor Act, a local counterpart for second reading.
So I don't, nothing's changed since first reading, and I let me know if one's different practice, but I'm not sure that it's worth going. Oh, I got it.
Um, that is incredibly loud. Um. So so not sure if it's worth going through these individually again, but mainly these are updates based on state law to get us in conformance. There were five that made it on for first reading last time. So there are five on second reading. We also added one on first reading for tonight. And that is the expansion of the liquor licensing authority to include retail tobacco licensing. And the one thing I do want to point out is it looked like the flavored tobacco ban was going to go through. It made it through thirds. And then it went to Senate Appropriations, and it was postponed indefinitely yesterday. So there's, I know, leaving us all to wonder what to do with flavored tobacco. Anyway, if anyone has any questions on this, let me know.
Well, that is disappointing. Not your presentation, but. Echo.
I guess we need to get the whole county to do it.
Well, wow, this is so loud, you guys. I'm I'm sorry. I think my voice can project further, but in any event, here's what I think it it does need to be at the state level to give you one example. The Denver City Council passed a flavored tobacco ban, and the the mayor ended up vetoing it. That's only his second veto in his history. Because I think the the logic is that, you know, you can ban it here, but I can go to Dillon or somewhere else and buy it there.
If we can get all municipalities in Summit County and the unincorporated county, that's that's pretty good.
It's statutory, so they have to follow the state.
But but it, I mean, you can't, you do have the authority right now. There's nothing that says you can't. I just think it's probably more reasonable to wait for this. This will pass eventually.
I didn't realize we had to wait for the county because there's statutory, but there's not a lot of retail county. There's not as many retail places in unincorporated that sell it, but probably a handful, like some gas stations.
Yeah.
Disappointing.
All right. Any questions on these five? And then the the sixth, adding retail tobacco to that one? No? All right. Then we have municipal court judge code amendment ordinance, second reading also.
Yep, this one is on second reading. No changes since first, and this is truly just a cleanup bill.
Questions? Parking code revisions. First reading. Yeah, come down front.
Eric, could you do planning commission decisions?
I didn't. I totally skipped over it because, you know, I've never done this job before. I'm obviously getting to the end of my rope here. I'll do it right after this. Hi.
Is this one on? All right. So this is the first reading for parking code revisions. You you all saw this. Not everyone. Some new council members did not, but it was a few weeks ago, and it's code changes and revisions to add maximum parking and shared parking agreements. Did take questions?
Questions? Questions?
Did you consider anything different for the workforce housing residential?
For the maximums?
Yeah.
No, we kind of thought just applying the same maximum to all those commercial multifamily was sufficient.
I think that's true. I just, I've heard rumblings that there's going to be some questions from the Wellington HOA about, you know, parking and how ADUs and it just sounds like, and I'm not sure if it would fit in here, if it's going to be a separate thing, but it seems like there might be a conversation that needs to occur between the town and HOA about parking and ADUs. And I'm not sure if that would really be part of this or completely separate, but thanks for taking note.
You know, that one was definitely something that we knew was going to come back.
Yeah.
Because of the way David O'Neill pushed that project through and his whole thing about walkability and not having enough cars. And even Dave Pringle at the time kept saying, but these people are all going to have teenage kids eventually, that are going to need more cars. And I don't know, David gave a David answer and.
Squirmed his way through. Well, I think it's okay. I mean, there's, you know, I just think that the HOA would like to have some clarity. And I'm not even sure what they want, but it seems like not having any clarity is maybe the issue.
Yeah. And I think we need maximums on single-family duplex and accessory apartments in residential. And that maximum can just be whatever that calculation is.
One ten percent?
Yeah, because, you know, when you sort of think about it, if somebody's going to build a monster home as a rental, they're already being told how much parking they're going to need. I, I don't, I mean, we can bump it up a little bit, but there's no need for them to have five per bedroom if they have a long driveway or something like that. So for second reading, I, I'd like you guys, maybe if the council's okay with it, to think about that. Julia?
Do you count then the long driveway as not, the parking, as not qualifying for parking spaces or?
I don't know. I don't know. I just don't, I don't want to get into a position where we're over parking neighborhood houses.
Or they're building a longer driveway so that they.
So they can park, overpark it.
Typically, we wouldn't see them build a longer driveway because they get the negative points. Or they're getting negative points for excessive paving if they're just putting in a giant parking pad. But the long driveway is sometimes necessary to get to the building envelope, for example. So I don't know how we would, if we were counting, and a lot of times we do count, you know, parking spaces in the driveway as available parking spaces. So how would we, I guess we could make a new definition, if you wanted to, that takes those out.
We could also look at driveway widths, right? So like if you have a parking and then a drive aisle, like you can't clog it up.
Right.
But that whole parking pad where they do park at the top of the drive.
You talk about it?
Yeah.
Bat around, and if you come back at the next one and say, it's not really necessary, then that, that's fine.
Another thing I wanted, that just popped in my head for Kelly, your question and comment. Wellington has the master plan, so I think the master plan overrides when they talk about parking requirements for those bonus rooms that would override this. Code, correct?
That's in the master plan, and these would be parking maximums. So I think what Wellington's issue might be that they don't want, do they not want any ADU parking spaces?
I don't know.
I'm not sure either.
They have, they are, they just think they have a huge parking problem right now.
Yeah.
It's only going to be exacerbated by more ADUs and things like that because of all the teenage drivers.
I still just don't know how much this would affect them.
It's their parking.
It sounds like it's more of an age, like the HOA needs to make the decision because it's in the master plan. Is that what you're saying?
It, it is in the master plan, and if we wanted to change that, we could process that with the HOA.
Okay.
Kind of sign off, kind of have to be a vote.
Yeah. Okay. More to come.
Yeah.
I hear that.
Right, because there's so many property owners now.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you both.
All right, anything else? Excellent, thanks. And then we have election commissioners appointment.
Is he going to do planning commission?
Oh, I am going to do it when she's done. I'm sorry. You can just stay here if you'd like. I think it's not, I mean, I don't know why I keep forgetting that, because I have it checked off, that's why.
So mayor and council, you'll feel like you just did this, which you did, because we had neglected to do it during COVID. But this is the official appointment that, of the election commission that takes place at the first meeting in May following a regular municipal election. So we are recommending appointment of the same two people who served on the election commission in that last appointment, Jennifer Schaffert and Eli Yoder. And they have both agreed to serve as part of that commission again.
Awesome. Questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, planning commission decisions. There was one decision. Anybody see the need for a call-up this evening or any questions? Thank you. All right, managers report. Rick.
Yeah. We got a few things we want to go over with you here, as Shannon's walking down. See if you have any questions relative to what's in the packet, and hopefully we'll get an update from Shannon also on some of our asphalt overlay and the plant that's been broken down, et cetera.
Asphalt. We think the plant is opening today, and we'll be back to paving Main Street tomorrow. We lost about a week to ten days of schedule, so that pushes us into the first week of June to finish Main Street. We'll pause to make sure the parade happens. But that's where we are, assuming asphalt really gets delivered tomorrow.
Week of June or first week of July?
Yeah, what? For downtown. Parade is May graduation. Oh, sorry, graduation parade, May twenty-fifth.
Gotcha.
We'll be out of downtown and off of Wellington Road by the first week of June. We're going to be done in May. Or is that acceptable to work into the beginning of June?
If we, we have to, don't we?
In front of his restaurant, so yeah.
We'll be away from Jay's Restaurant tomorrow. We could make changes to how we were doing Main Street closures to pick up time. We could do a double block closure rather than a single block, but we've stayed away from that because it seems to be more impactful to businesses if there's two blocks closed.
I think June is fine. Does everybody think June's okay?
I like the block by block progression versus, like you said, if businesses that are caught in the middle of a two-block closure.
June's next best, you know. First week of June is our next best choice.
Yes.
Since, you know, due to the asphalt, we lost May.
And, you know, if asphalt doesn't come this week, we can talk again about it. It would be the second week of June, that sort of thing.
I think June's better than September.
Oh, yeah. It's got to be done.
Challenge, we checked on other vendors or other places to get the asphalt, but then it travels too far out of the Denver area farther west. It's just, you know, it loses its heat, right?
It'll be out of spec by the time it gets.
Everest?
Yeah, it's Everest, the peak materials plant north of Silverthorn has been down for well over a week now. Mechanical problems, then electrical problems. But I heard they were functional today for delivery tomorrow.
Okay.
Great. All right, that's an update on that. Do you have questions on any of the projects in the packet? We can talk delivery zones under mobility.
Okay.
So far, they're doing a good job on the roundabout, getting people through, I think, seems like.
Yep, and we'll be working on those potholes as we get hot mix. We put cold mix in there, but cold mix only gets you so smooth. So we'll hit those potholes hopefully this week.
That's a good one.
Do now. There's the one where it's shoved even a little bit further north of Watson. Watch out for that one.
All right. All right. So the other, the other big project that was not part of the packet, and it was by design was the Goosebumps return dam update. There's been a development over the last week that's been kind of day by day. And really, the result of the development is, is it's, it's, it's pushing us off schedule on the project. What has happened is we have a, if council recalls, there was a bypass pipe that was designed as part of this project to carry all the water, particularly at this time, the, the spring runoff. And everything until about a week ago was on schedule. And, but as we were discovered that there is a leak in that pipe, and this is again about a week or so ago. So obviously, that, that came to everyone's attention, and there was some further investigation into that. And the discovery kind of led to a few more issues within that pipe. To date, and we just had a construction call just about an hour ago. So the repairs have been made to the pipes, especially to the, some of the initial discovery and some of the bigger issues of that pipe. The state engineer is involved, obviously. We spoke with Brian Bovard from the County Emergency. So he's, he's in the know. In terms of risk, we're not, not in a situation where the dam's going to breach or, or there's any, anything of that nature that's going to happen. What we're dealing with now is, is just trying to look for the best way to convey that water or move that water. The backup plan here, and it's not so much a backup plan, but it's, it's a plan that always existed, but we weren't counting on it. Is there is an existing outlet works that's part of the dam. So that's the thirty-inch pipe that, that conveyed water previous to all this work. So that pipe was never designed to be part of where we're at right now. But it does allow us the ability, and we will use that, very likely, we're going to use that pipe in conjunction with the ninety-six-inch pipe to, to move this water that's not only impounded in the tarn right now, but over the next days and weeks as we kind of move through this peak runoff. You know, there's been a lot of calculations, and I think everyone, you know, kind of in the, with the knowledge of knowing what the snowpack is right now. There's, I guess, the, the good thing, well, it's not necessarily a good thing, is, is that we are below snowpack in the basin. So we're not, we don't have a lot of snow to come down yet, but that being said, it's important how that snow, or how that snow does melt and, and come off. We are anticipating right now that we have the ability with the ninety-six-inch pipe was designed to, for a design flood of seven hundred CFS, which we've never had seven hundred CFS, but also kind of based on this information, there, there's no way that the design and construction team would be comfortable trying to put that much water through that pipe. What we are doing, like I said, we are preparing the outlet works for that, and that, that pipe can move a hundred and twenty-five CFS. Just as a kind of a reference point, last year, peak runoff was a hundred and eight CFS. The previous year is a hundred and thirty-eight CFS, and previous to that, it was on the order of two, two forty or something like that. So it is, you know, in the, in the world of possibilities, I guess, if it gets really warm and, and that snow comes off really quick, we could see a lot of water coming in there. But right now, in discussions with designing and the contractor in the state, we believe we have a plan to handle that water. Probably the thing that we'll see today yet is we are going to be putting, to date, there's been very limited release of water in there to allow us to do the repairs to the pipe, the main ninety-six-inch pipe. But today, we are going to be pulling the bulkhead on that and releasing on the order of sixty CFS in that pipe. And that water will become kind of the baseline or kind of the beginning of the water you'll see in the stream from, through the next few weeks as the runoff. The other piece of that too, and we have started some of the demolition work around the outlet pipe. So there's quite a bit of exposed material embankment fill, as some of that stream bed and some of that, those materials have been moved in preparation for this project. There has been kind of a, a reverse of some of that work as we look to reconstruct that channel again, in preparation to take this water. So we are doing, through the discussions, we're doing everything we can to mitigate any kind of sedimentation that's going to be released in this. We feel like we are, we're in a good situation for that right now, but there will be the potential of some, some, you know, a little bit cloudier water that'll be, be observable in the, in the river here over the next short period. Hopefully, it is just a short period. And that's, that's really the, kind of the update. Probably the, the unknown aspect of this right now is it is pushing on the schedule. It's got, it's kind of made the schedule go sideways, if not a little bit backwards for the moment. And so we haven't really tried to discuss as a project team, kind of what the, what the result of that is. But it is going to be a delay in the schedule. So take any questions if there's.
I do.
Yes.
Whose fault is the ninety-six-inch pipe, and who's paying for everything that surrounds fixing it?
You know, Eric, those, those questions are out there, but I don't know that we've really come together and tried to put any kind of pinpoint, any kind of. There's a number of things as part of this. There's some, you know, everyone's kind of taking a corner right now in terms of the design team and the contractor. And these are, I won't say they're, they're guarded or tenuous at the moment, but I don't, I think right now our best, we need to just kind of keep working for it as a team to make sure that we can get the water on the right side of the dam, and then we'll come back to that.
What's the total, I mean, what's this going to cost for whoever?
I don't even know if I could be comfortable saying a number. I mean, we've, the schedule has slipped probably by maybe on the order of three weeks, maybe, maybe longer, which there was a, if you, council recalls, this construction season was very tight. There was no float days in it at all. So really what, probably the result of this will be with it, it'll push some of this work off into next year's season. And next year's season was really not intended to be as intensive on some of the construction side of this. So that's to be sorted out, and we'll certainly come back and as we get a little bit more information about that. You know, the, the installation of the pipe or this type of pipe that was been used as part of this design, it's not, it's not the first time this has been used. It's, it's, again, this has had a lot of review and a lot of approvals at a lot of different levels. So it wasn't so much that the pipe that was chosen for the project was the issue. It's, there's, there's some other aspects about it that are, are a little bit unique to this. But again, we'll come back with some, as we understand it a little bit more in terms of delay and cost and ownership and that.
Other question. You had a good week. That's tough. Well, thanks for the update, guys.
Yeah, thank you.
Mobility.
You know, and not their fault.
It's more of a manufacturer's problem. Afternoon.
First item under mobility today is the proposal to try out moving the delivery zone. Delivery zones in both the Ice House and Gold Pan alleys. This is to support the concepts of the, what we are calling the Living Lab, taking a look at these areas between Watson and Ski Hill and into the Ice House Alley, trying to support safer movements for pedestrians and bicycles in this corridor. So we took a stab at proposing some alternative deliveries on locations if we were to move it out of the Ice House Alley. We're looking for your feedback, whether.
I'm waiting.
These work.
Questions?
Wondering, I know you swung by Clint's, did you swing by other businesses? And what was the general feedback there?
I have limited my outreach because I wasn't sure if council was going to support this. I reached out to Clint's because we wanted to put a second one on Main Street. We found one right on the one hundred block. And we weren't sure if another one at the north end of the one hundred block would be beneficial or moving it to the two hundred block. So after talking to the owners at Clint's, she proposed moving it in front of the Welcome Center rather than right in front of her business. As to not block those parking spots during morning hours.
You know, I think we're going to have to get here at some point if we really are serious about trying to do something along the Blue River, which I am. I mean, our, the drivers, I feel for them. It's, it, recognition already has a reputation of being a really, really difficult place to deliver, but, you know. But, you know, it just is what it is and I I really want to push the envelope some to be able to take a serious approach to the to the Riverwalk in that corridor along the river, it, you know, so far as design and implementation. And these delivery drivers are going to have to become accustomed to early morning stops and and you know, not quite such convenient locations to for us to accomplish the the work that we want to do along the river, so.
Is it would it be feasible to allow the delivery off the alley, which we know is the most convenient? Because most of those businesses want delivery at the rear. If it was only during early hours of the day, when we don't really need the Riverwalk. We don't have the real Riverwalk pedestrian access issues.
Before seven, is that what you're thinking?
I was thinking maybe nine, maybe nine or, you know, we used to really try to get, we didn't see a real uptick in traffic around ten AM and that's when we used to kind of shut down gates and that, if I remember correctly, that when we had those, but that's kind of all got a little wonky, but I I don't know what that right number is. Where there could be a compromise that, you know, that it's a very, it's a limited hour use there. And then if they're, if they can't make it for whatever reason, then they'd be forced to a more inconvenient location, I guess.
I I originally met with Shannon and thought, yeah, this would be great to try it. And then I have since been really thinking about this a lot. So on a busy day, virtually everybody takes their deliveries through the back, which is the number one thing, which means they're walking on the sidewalk, which I didn't even think about before. So you think when, like, when I have a busy delivery from just one vendor like Shamrock, it's seventy cases. That's ten to fifteen loads. When the sidewalk's busy, that's a ton of interaction with a guy that's trying to get his job done, running through a bunch of people to, you know, go through a courtyard that's probably has tables on because Columbine busy. There was a bunch of things I didn't really think about, so I think I think maybe we should really try to push these companies. The bigger ones, the bigger companies that use the bigger semis to just drop earlier. Yeah. I I think I think that's better. And then retain these delivery zones for the smaller companies, in particular, some of the liquor companies that do sort of smaller drops. Although the big ones like Coors and Anheuser Busch that are delivering kegs. You know, that having those guys walking down the sidewalk is going to be a huge issue also, like it's a completely different type of interaction than what we already have in the back that we don't like with narrow sidewalks, so.
And this is, this is, I I get that this is forward looking things, you know, looking to establish this Riverwalk. And what where I'm going is very present day now, but it is our reality in the fact that all these wholesalers are short staffed, they're getting drivers whenever they can. We're getting semis pulling up at seven in the morning, at noon, at three in the afternoon, and at seven at night. And to your point, I think about a July day and having, whether it's cases of wine, case of beer, you know, FedEx, you know, rack, pulling up to Main Street. And I I'm concerned about the logistics of it with guests, supplier interactions. And I think if you are trying to place a time limit on it, that you're you're expecting a driver who already doesn't want to come to Breckenridge. And it's the same guy who's coming, you know, comes up on a regular basis and he's allowed to go into this alley at certain times and not the other. I just don't see that inconsistency working well without having conflict.
How they do it in in the village of Vale? I mean, where there's no, no, you know, motor vehicles after a certain time allowed in there. How are they delivering to all those restaurants that are in there and stuff? They have to get there if they want delivery. At a certain time. There we seem to make it work there.
Usually you see a hand truck going through there mid morning, but they don't look happy.
Well, no, that's why I think that's what we should do, though, is is set an hour for an easier delivery zone. And then after that.
I'm fine with that. Early morning.
Question is really trying to get to all these companies now, which I'm sure you've been trying and it's pretty difficult. They tend to avoid these conversations.
Exactly.
And so were these two spots selected because they're close to the corner, so they would lose the least parking spots?
The Main Street ones?
Yeah, because, you know, I mean, I know we don't want to lose in the parking lot, but it seems like that makes so much more sense to put a delivery zone in the parking lot that's maybe just until noon or something, you know, next to the trash cans. And then they're still using the back. But they're still using the back entry and they're not forced to walk through the sidewalks and things. But that's more parking spots.
We don't really lose that many parking spots in this scenario on Main Street.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That must be why they selected those spots because.
We're losing one in front of Eric's because I did a double, it's a hundred feet, so one parking spot would be compromised. No spots on the two hundred.
My my guess is they're going to use the ones off Ski Hill Road more. Because they don't want it to be on Main Street when it's busy either, you know?
So there's.
Just wheel down, they'll just push a hand truck down the alley with all the pedestrians.
So we have a long one there in Ski Hill, and then we have a double wide right there on the Gold Pan Alley where there's some errant.
I suspect that's going to be the part, the delivery parking of of preference.
The part on the the delivery zone in the behind the gold pan, that's not private parking? Is that?
We own that building, so we control it. It has some permit parking now that's not heavily enforced in my observation.
Talking about mixes.
And with this scenario, did you guys envision having time limits, like either just on the Main Street spots or it working in tandem with that at all and trying that out this year?
We've played a round with that, if you want to.
Yeah, we, yeah, we've kind of discussed the idea of active unloading and loading only, which we can work more with Breck Park to enforce and and figure out a timeline what that looks like.
The one on the two hundred block would definitely need a time limit because it's in the trolley stop, which runs starting at eleven AM. The one on the one hundred block could be always, the one on Ski Hill could be always. But this is sort of a, you know, a reset. What do we want to enforce for deliveries? Just in this area, we're not going to the other areas yet. There are alley conflicts.
So here's something I was thinking about that I don't I don't, I don't know how the parking thing, I don't know what the regulations and stuff are. But what if, what if the the Ice House lot was a dead end parking lot instead of a pull through parking lot? Is there enough room that that works?
For a semi truck?
No, no, I'm talking about that, just getting all the cars out of the alley part. Then you could potentially let delivery drivers in because it's more. You know, the delivery drivers just aren't there all the time, even and especially if you limited it and then you had the ones on Main Street.
So legally, we don't have rights across the Bly building parking lot. We've reached out to him to have some conversations.
Okay.
Haven't made much progress, honestly, on that. So we would have to keep the little segment. The most north segment behind goods, whatever that is now.
Mother loaded.
Mother loaded, that would have to officially be two way unless we got an easement from Bly. So it would be a little awkward there. We could turn cars or we could dead end it for cars, for sure. I don't know how that works with the trash truck.
It's.
And any big vehicles. Do the do the delivery trucks come through that way and?
You do, yeah.
Okay. That'd be tough. We definitely don't want them backing.
And that's. Do you think it would be beneficial at all to see kind of the Riverwalk alley improvement, like the dream of like, what is trying to get to get accomplished here? Do you think that would, would that be beneficial for anyone to like, see that to to have an idea of what to change behavior and to be maybe having these the additional changes on whether it's like what the ultimate goal is, or maybe this has already been shown?
So if you scroll up to page one thirty three, we have the interim dream. It's what we wanted to do. So pages one thirty one through one thirty three are the plans for this year's work.
Yeah, so that was an, if you guys are on the.
So one thirty three is beginning at Watson. So the idea is to split the modalities, is that the right word? So you have one place where we're trying to get bikes to go. That's along the new rec path extension, the river.
That's the yellow one?
That is green leading to yellow. If you're on one thirty one, I'm going to start on that one. So we're trying to direct bikes from the rec path at Watson, where kind of awkwardly dead ends onto this new rec path spur against the river. And then we're trying to direct pedestrians in the blue lane in the alley. You can see it begin there on the south end by the Wellington lot. But if you go to one thirty two, you see how we have that blue segment along the alley, that's Gold Pan Alley, crosses Ski Hill and then goes into Ice House. So we're trying to keep bikes on the river, pets in the alley. We all went as a group out there with a design consultant and kind of observed what people did. And we don't think we can get people to not walk straight down the alley, no matter what we do. So that's where the people are going to go.
Gotcha.
Bikes, you have a better chance of directing them, especially, oh, I got my e-bike, I'm going to go for a little ride. They're more likely to follow signs. But locals are just going to walk down the alley. So that's really what we're trying to do, make it a safer pedestrian experience and give bikes some guidance as they get through this awkward part of town. With the bigger goals of getting bikes past the Riverwalk to the south end. So there's some bigger visioning that we need to do as we move further south.
And like, avoid that dismount area?
There'd be potential to have a bridge here where the dumpster building is sort of shooting them up towards the paly. We talked about underpasses about Ski Hill and Watson in the bigger scheme of things. But this year was really, let's see what happens if we try to separate these modes of transportation through these two blocks. Does that help?
It does because I wasn't, maybe I didn't read everything, like all the notes, but I wasn't sure what the blue line
Okay.
was.
And I didn't put the whole whole plan set in there, so it probably left a lot to be desired. So we were actually going to paint the asphalt blue and put up a series of bollards to designate the pedestrian zone, removable bollards. But if we are going to let trucks in Ice House, I don't know if there's much benefit to using the blue paint back there because then we can't put the bollards up. Because the trucks are going to have to pull in and out of there because the pedestrian path goes on the delivery zone.
And there's not enough, there's not enough width back there for trucks and cars.
On Ski Hill, could you have another delivery zone on the opposite side of where you've got it right now? Is there enough room there, like next to the Bly building to to maybe pull it off of the Ice House and keep trucks out of that alley?
There's a couple of trucks that park there right now whenever they feel like it anyway, but it's
Yeah.
It's pretty much the way it blocks traffic.
Enough, especially in the winter. I mean, I love the concept of like this interim step and, you know, one of my, I think, important items long term is, as we talked about a little bit, like that whole river corridors is is just this magical opportunity for our community. And I think going and getting some stuff out there, seeing what works, seeing what doesn't, and then doing better is a let's figure it out.
What if, what if we got rid of the the planting area and turned that into pedestrian walkway?
The raised media?
Trees are.
That was, yeah, I would feel like that's the grand plan sort of, but this plan was the interim to see if we could get people to go where they're supposed to go and deliveries to deliver when they're supposed to deliver.
I'm going to say no to both of those because I know how people are.
Ultimately, we want to shift the whole Ice House parking lot a bit east to free up the corridor next to the river, like
Yeah.
Get rid of that planting, get rid of the delivery zone if that works and shift everything open and really enhance along the river. But that's a much more
Yeah.
involved project.
Yeah. I like where you're going with that, though.
And I was thinking the delivery zone change would try it out for the summer. I think winter conditions are
Different.
More consideration needs to be given. Let's, I don't know, we can try this and see if it changes behavior at all, honestly, if alleys feel safer. More inviting because part of this also was, you know, during COVID, having that relief for the Main Street sidewalks and making a nicer place for people to walk. Sort of spread everything out. And that's sort of where some of these ideas came from.
No, and I totally believe in the overarching plan. I think it is the way we have to to proceed. I'm just, I am definitely worried about. I'm definitely worried about the inner interface on Main Street with with a narrow sidewalk and delivery guys that are just going as fast as they can.
Cap the time on that? Is that more important? Get, I mean, they'd have to walk further, but.
We could do ten AM on Main Street, so they're not doing that. And if you come after ten, use Gold Pan or Ski Hill.
Yeah.
And they're not having to do that interaction crossing.
I like that. And then I think when we get ready to do the permanent, we need to give these guys six months notice. To say, you guys have to hire up, we're becoming Vale Village for the.
Do we have connections in Vale to talk to those guys to get smart on how they do it? Because that seems way more complicated than what we're doing. We can probably find out some contacts for sure. Just feel like there's got to be some lessons learned in there. Absolutely.
Limits their deliveries as well to to earlier AM.
I mean, a lot of the, some of the trucks that deliver in the back alley at Ice House, they come early, don't use the delivery zone. They park in the alley because it's a foot away from the door, but nobody says anything because nobody's there. And those are early, those are like five AM, what they call dark stop.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can put together outrage, we can get with Vale Keystone. I heard they're very strict also.
Oh, yeah, I didn't even think about the village there, yeah.
Do their deliveries. I don't think what we're asking is out of line. I think we're very permissive with what we allow.
Yeah, the, I mean, John, I like the dark drops.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I prefer them. I mean, I'd assume fill the kitchen when the guys get there first thing, just put everything away and away you go.
It's just paint, it'll be gone after winter anyway if it doesn't work.
That's what they said.
The blue Aspen paint?
Rubbing paint doesn't seem to last as long as the.
Where do we land? We try to just time limit before ten AM on the any Main Street deliveries?
Yeah. Well, I I still think we should allow them to use the back if they're if they're early.
But if we're putting bollards up, will that be problematic?
Well, that's true. I will tell you that anytime after that, the delivery zone in the front will have a lot of problem cutting through from Main Street to the mother loaded and our place and modus. Because the courtyard will be full of tables and chairs, and that's the only way through that block.
Well, he's all permitted to put the tables where he wants to.
Yes, and he will.
I think that's.
I know, but you can't go, this is almost useless at that point, that you there's no, anytime before eight o'clock or after eight o'clock, you won't, you can't even get through there. And that's the only that's the only way through the whole stretch of block now. It's almost like that delivery zone just really is not going to work for for anybody unless unless some of the merchants allow you them to use the front door, but that's I I don't see anybody doing that.
If we're going for time, oh. If we're going for ti- oh, never mind, the bollards.
We don't have to do the bollards, but then I don't think it makes the separation as effective. Do you want me to do away with that hundred block one? If.
I don't know, that's just, when I'm, I'm just saying what I.
Prefer to try to get the delivery in the alley in the early hours. It's convenient, quicker, easier, less disruptive, I think.
On top, on top of the ped zone, so get rid of delineating.
I don't know, that's where I have to, we have to look at the map and see what we got there.
Could you do mechanical bollards that are timed, like, so that, you know, they close it?
For the budget we got.
Down the road.
Yeah.
Because ultimately, I mean, I think getting trucks out of the, out of that zone and.
But Eric, don't you think early, they'll just go through the Bligh and then just park right there anyway? I mean, we're worried about early, but they're just gonna go through the Bligh Building early.
Well, that's what they do now.
Yeah, and they turn around.
Just do what they do now. They'll just come all the way through and make the turn and then just park in the alley.
Yeah.
Like they currently do.
Right, but if the alley is blocked with bollards, then they'll just park in the parking lot and go through, and it's.
Well, the whole alley won't be blocked with bollards. It'll be the current delivery zone. So if they're early, they'll just be parking. They'll just block the alley.
Like they do at the other end, every single day.
Yeah, and if it's early enough, that doesn't really matter.
Yeah, if it's early enough, because they do it down the other end till about noon.
Right.
And I'm wondering if that's an issue, honestly. I, as long as they're in the process, if we had fire truck or something, they had to get down there, they could move. You know, cars can turn around and come back.
Right.
The other way, they can uh, in the actual Ice House lot, so maybe, because I was thinking about that, we still keep the bollard pedestrian pathway, create that, and just allow them to park in the alleyway before ten AM.
It's like, that solves it.
And keep them on, keep them on, keep them uh, south of the turnout, you know, where you turn in.
Right.
Your uh, between, between your building and Motherload, Eric, you know the turn there?
Yeah.
I think Motherload, they'll just park on Ski Hill. That's an easy pop right across.
You know, it's easy, except they gotta cross Ski Hill.
Yeah, well.
You know, I mean.
Can we look at, maybe we can look at that a little bit and see if that's the preference, if we think that.
There's implied one way of that lot, right? Like, I guess the, you go in the western side of that and go around.
It's only implied, though. It's not.
There's no markings.
There's no markings. I mean, if you pull in the wrong way, people will give you a dirty look, but there's no, that doesn't actually exist. That's just.
But if we, if that western entrance was a legitimate two-way.
But that's private, so we can't really do that striping. We, we can't control that as a town, because Bligh is private. And we haven't gotten their permission to do this yet, you know?
But it is, to your point, it is, that's what it is now, is two-way. We can't make it one-way, right? So right now.
Because that would be the answer, Jay, but it's, but we can't.
No, what I'm saying is that if it currently, if it's only implied being one-way and currently is allowed to be two, then that alley that will be, you know, that is against the buildings, should be fair game to block.
But then I think the, one of the main purposes was to um, ease user conflict and make sure that pedestrians have that clear way.
Yeah, because they still would have.
You'd have, if you had bollards up, cars could drive in pedestrian path.
Yeah, the other problem with that right against the buildings, though, is there are a number of parking spaces that are privately, you know, the, the.
You can't access.
Then the toy store have um, Mountain Goat has a couple, Modus actually has a couple in that, that area. We have a garage, Mother Loaded has their, whatever it is. I guess it's outdoor deck and that, so in the summer, that would work.
But again, we limit till early morning for, till early morning. Isn't that what we're talking about?
Arriving for work, some of them and.
Right, yeah, that's right.
Disco handles it okay with Bill's Ranch and the, the bike path there? I mean, they just, if, if people drive down the bike path to get to their houses because of historical access. I think I can solve that.
Cut through to Wellington.
Well, they drive on the Riverwalk, too, if the. I, I think in the end, the real solution is to get rid of the raised, the raised area.
Make that the walkway.
Make that the walkway.
Keep deliveries in there?
Hmm.
I mean, I think the, the question, though, is, can we really accomplish the goal of reducing, oh, okay.
No, I, I think we should just push, I think we should push the deliveries, it, no matter what we do. Even if you don't do anything this summer, I think we should start moving in that way that they have to deliver, they have to deliver early. They can't, you know, they'll just have to alter their plans.
But telling them that, they won't do it. If we do this, they will do it, because they aren't gonna wanna walk that far.
Yeah.
And just someone on the same page as you, where's the raised area you're talking about?
That's where those trees are, in front of the, in front of the cars. If we, if you got rid of that, made that the walkway, and then you didn't have a delivery zone there, you just had a wider alley. And there was no parking there, and then the. And they can only, you know, it'd be deliveries until ten, and then we just start ticketing. Mate, it's just a, just a maybe.
What do you wanna do for this summer?
I don't know.
I'm sure everyone here is asleep behind us, wanting to kill me.
I feel like we need to go out there and look at it again.
We have some time. I mean, we're demoing in Sawmill right now. We're gonna get that bike path spur put in. We're gonna get the parking lot put back together, so we can get it open for parking, get the bike path built, and then I was gonna.
Can we?
Touch the alleys.
Can we, oh, walk this thing again in the next week?
Time, we, we could just say we're gonna meet out there on Friday morning or something if we want, it'd be great.
Let's set it right now, can we?
You have the important schedule, so.
Pull up my calendar. I think Friday's morning's tough, we're interviewing.
It's Friday, we're doing those interviews at nine AM, so we'd have to be out there at eight.
Thursday?
I'm free all Thursday morning.
I have jury duty.
Seriously?
All the night before, it'll be canceled, I'm sure.
I mean, I could do early, I could do eight o'clock on Friday.
Oh, yeah, good.
You have interviews, right?
We can do eight. Um, I'll be there at eight fifteen.
I'll be there at eight fifteen as well.
If Kelly brings our kids to the bus stop, eight.
At eight, send me your order.
Thirty minutes enough, though, Eric.
Depends who shows up. Uh, what about, uh, so, so that was no to Thursday, because you have. What about tomorrow? Wednesday, day after council?
Good way to start the month.
Well, they, yeah, I mean.
You know, we do, could you do like, nine-thirty-ish?
Tomorrow?
Want to meet out there at nine-thirty?
Tomorrow, Wednesday.
I've got till ten-thirty.
You're busy.
I'm busy.
What do you, what do you?
Gonna be in the gym, his four hours aren't up yet.
Ping, Todd gets out of jury duty.
Yeah.
Thursday morning sounding the best.
Thursday morning, okay.
Thursday, what time?
Eight thirty.
Eight thirty Thursday morning.
Ice House.
Eight thirty Thursday. They get a reason to get out of jury duty, just in case.
Yeah. And send me your coffee order.
It's not how we talk about it here.
Oh, really?
You are in court.
Today, it's not court day today, and it's not this court he's going to. He's going to the big court. Okay, good?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, any other mobility update?
Sir, in your packet, I'll take any questions.
Drew, the dog policy.
Oh, yeah.
Excited for that. I think it'll be a great win for all of us.
Yeah?
Yeah.
As I'm reading, serious.
Have a dog hanging out at home, ready to go.
Oh, sweet, okay.
I'm sorry, when will that start, Matt?
Uh, well, we actually have a meeting with our drivers tomorrow, uh, just our normal monthly meeting, so we'll talk to them then, and we're pretty much active now.
Do they know about it?
They do, they have buy-in, we're good.
They're okay with it, okay.
Yep.
So we can tell the public by the end of the week?
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Take my dog for a ride.
Think this'll make a big difference for the locals.
Look at my little dog.
Sounds like you've been having success with hiring staff, doing good there?
We're doing pretty good. Uh, we're a little bit concerned with kind of rolling into summer, as we get a little busier. Um, but we have quite a few people in the pipeline, they're just looking for housing.
Is that seasonal hiring, or is that full-time?
Right now, seasonal for summer.
Great.
All right, thank you.
We're getting way behind.
Yeah, really? Yeah, I noticed. Housing and childcare, update? I'm gonna catch us up.
Yes, um, this should be fast. Actually, um, Austin is here, but only for a few minutes. She needs to be over at Carriage House, meeting with families about tuition assistance program. So I don't know if there's any questions on childcare before we get into housing.
Anybody?
Thank you for going to that meeting, of course.
Okay.
We'll be coming to the council the first meeting in June, I think, maybe, or second meeting.
Twenty-fourth, for the work session?
Talk about kind of the whole capacity issue and uh, maybe a long-term capital plan on what, how we could best utilize funds to expand capacity, et cetera, so.
You can expect a work session soon.
Okay. Other childcare stuff? No, housing?
Um, sure. Um, there were some minutes in your packet. I don't know if anybody had any questions on those, or, those were from our, I think it was the April twelfth Housing Committee meeting. Then we did have a committee meeting today, and there was something that came out that's time-sensitive that I do wanna talk to you about. If you don't have any questions on the last minutes.
Anything? Nope, go ahead.
So today, um, today, we, we, we talked a lot about a lot of things, and you're gonna see most of that in the next set of minutes that come through. But one thing that is time-sensitive is an opportunity, um, that's been discussed in regard to maybe a partnership with CMC um, in Summit County. Um, as you all know, um, CMC is about to begin construction on their building. Um, and their, their building is a thirty-six units, forty-eight beds. And um, there's been some talk with the county and the town and CMC about perhaps building a second building concurrently, um, and the second building being a town building funded by the town, but it would be built by Shaw. Um, it's time-sensitive, because Shaw is going to start construction July second.
Well, they need a go-no.
Yeah, yeah. And so, um, the committee talked about this today at our committee meeting about whether the town would be interested and the county would be interested in partnering with CMC and sort of funding the construction of that second building. Um, the cost per unit is super affordable. Well, relatively affordable compared to what we're paying for other units. And I think that's just because CMC is working with Sean so many units across the state. They're basically doing projects in every um, community where they have a college, and they got a big COP fund to, to do projects on all of their campuses, so, yeah, yeah. So, um, I think the, the concept would be, if we're interested in pursuing the conversation with them, would be that the town would fund construction of a building which would be identical to the one they're building for themselves. And we would do a thirty-year land lease with them, so um, after thirty years, there'd have to be a negotiation on, I guess, they would assume ownership of the building. But there would have to be some sort of deed restriction on the building that we pay to build. That requires some type of employment, whether that's thirty hours of employment, or if they're a full-time student, maybe it's fifteen hours of employment. I think that would be something that has to be negotiated with CMC. But it seems like a good opportunity, take advantage of project that's already happening. And it's, um, you know, forty-six, forty-eight additional beds that would be built in the community that we would not have to be managing that construction project, so um, I think that's basically the some.
Is it right there on their property, too?
Yeah, right next to it.
Okay.
It's got the capacity to do it. They don't have, number one, they don't have the funding to do a second one, and they would be reluctant to do a second one right now, because they're not sure how great their student housing need is.
Yeah.
So if it could be filled with some students if needed, but then just used in general for workforce housing, uh, that's a win-win. And uh, so, and you know, the town has an agreement when the town sold that land, so we're protected on what that can be used for. And you know, even beyond those thirty years, if it reverts to their ownership, it's still protected for, you know, it's not gonna be sold to some market rate, market-type development thing, because we have a first right refusal. It's becomes uh, non-educational type uses.
I love it, I'm.
Yeah.
Is the building gonna be an exact duplicate of the one that we just proved?
Very attractive.
Yeah, and it's just studios, right?
Say, the only thing that's an issue that we should be aware of is, you know, we typically would require net zero or some high sustainability standards, um, and I don't think CMC has incorporated that in their projects. So that's something that would likely not be included.
If we like the net zero, I would tell you that if we start changing a bunch of stuff, it'll throw this out of whack. It's gotta go in, they want the same building, just.
This is part.
Solar to offset?
We.
Can still be true to our hundred percent sustainability for town-owned built buildings. This is a partnership building, just like the Justice Center, where we're struggling to do it as well, so. I mean, I think town, stuff that we do alone, on our own, I, I think we stay true to the hundred percent sustainable. But stuff that we're doing as a partnership, sometimes it's out of our control, and I guess is one of them.
We can always find a roof. We don't have to do it. I mean, we can be true to this goal, no matter what. I, I'm sure there are a lot of workforce housing units that would be more than happy to get solar on there.
I'll set it somewhere else.
Do it elsewhere, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we could buy in just other gardens or whatever, to, to do an offset.
I like the idea of not complicating the existing program.
I mean, we, I wanna make, all we need from you is if you're supportive. Obviously, the final agreement has to be approved and adopted, you know, via probably a resolution or something by the council. Uh, I, I just need to start working on it uh, with the county and CMC.
Would this go in front of planning before, or is it bypassing that?
It, it probably would very quickly, just like the last one, because it's still exempt from. It's still owned, it's still on, it's part of the school project thing, so.
Good, okay, good.
That was it, unless you had any other questions on housing.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, committee reports, there was uh.
A lot of, they had three BOSAC meeting minutes in there, and uh, anyway, a, a quick, a short police advisory.
Yeah, any questions on the BOSAC minutes? Or the police, all right. Um, events?
The minutes are in the packet. Note, it was Kelly's first meeting, so it was.
Went super long?
Twenty-two minute meeting.
This is what happens, Todd, that you're not there and I was running.
This is amazing.
I got the best committee ever.
Wow.
But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Jay's, Jay's childcare meeting was at twenty-two minutes.
Any questions on BOSAC or police? Nope, um, or on, on events, I mean, no, 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 no. All right, open space, update, and it's got.
Hello, mayor and council, it's great to see you all. Since our last meeting in April, uh, our master plan has been progressing. There was a draft sent to all BOSAC members, and also hopefully you all received it as well toward the end of April, somewhere around the twentieth. And we had a meeting with uh, BOSAC and DTJ Design at our regular April BOSAC meeting on the twenty-fifth. And we had a meeting with, uh, BOSAC and DTJ Design at our regular April BOSAC meeting on the twenty-fifth, where DTJ was really fielding a lot of questions, um, and concerns from BOSAC members about the draft report. Following that, that meeting, all BOSAC members took their own comments, sent those to me. I compiled them, um, and sent those off to DTJ. DTJ has those now. One of the big issues that surfaced during our meeting and certainly in all of the comments that we received from BOSAC members was the formatting and the flow of the document was really, really clunky. Which if you've taken a look at it, you'll probably agree with that, that, um, concept. So they are doing a major overhaul of that formatting of the document so that it does read better. The intent is to have a bit of an executive summary that's, um, in a nutshell, here's what the plan provides and something that's visually appealing. The average reader can, can pick up and understand what that plan is about. And then go into a deeper dive if you want to get into all of the nitty-gritty and kind of how some of these analyses were provided, um, into a longer part of the report. So, um, we did receive comments also from two council members, so Jeffrey and Todd, thanks so much for, um, contributing comments. If you'd like to submit comments right now, um, it's, it's a good time to do so. We can still have DTJ work those into, um, this next iteration of a draft. From their perspective, the reformatting of the document and just all of the layout, um, takes a little bit of time. So we have still a little bit more time for comments to be able to work in there. And they are hoping to get us a draft document, um, by the twenty-seventh. That could go out to everyone for review, again, both to BOSAC and to council. Hopefully, it's a much cleaner, easier-to-read document. Um, and in the meantime, our, our May BOSAC meeting is on the twenty-third, and that is gonna be our annual open space, um, open house. So we would love for you all to attend that. Um, one of the things that we're going to do in addition to talking about our usual, um, projects that you all approved, some of our land management, um, efforts that are underway, we are planning on doing an interactive, um, open space on the McCain property. As we are trying to seek some grant funding, um, through GOCO and other sources, the, the constant theme we hear from them is we need public engagement. When's your open house? And so we want to get a jumpstart on getting some of that public feedback. BOSAC sort of started and teed off that conversation with some ideas on how to use that additional fifteen acres, um, that council wanted us to purchase, convert the southern end of the property, um, outside of the river corridor. And we would just love to get, um, the public's engagement and feedback on what they envisioned for that space. So we hope to set up a good interactive, um, kind of exhibit, uh, there that we can host. And as usual, we're gonna have our BOSAC members help, um, moderate some of these discussions that take place with boards around the room. And then following the meeting, it starts at five-thirty. We hope to finish the open house around seven. We'll do a very short BOSAC meeting, um, just to cover any other topics that have come up. If there's more information on the master plan, we can discuss it then. There is a trail name change that we've been talking about for a little while, which is the Trail of Tears and changing that to, um, something, uh, likely to reference the historic mining, um, claim in that particular area so that it's, it's not offensive. We've received some public comments on that. But otherwise, it will be a short, uh, meeting for May.
I have a question about the, or maybe a suggestion, but I know that one of the things that came up in BOSAC discussion was how much that open space is gonna be utilized by Alta Verde and the people living in those homes. So I just, um, I know that there are some different trail alignments and different things that, you know, some of it feels a little decided and then others isn't decided.
Very much.
But if you guys could maybe discuss that with either Lori and some of the housing people, or I'm not even sure who, um, is the right, but the people who are like experts at, we build workforce housing and here's what people want. So that we don't have too many competing uses in that small area, because I know it seems big right now, but when we talk about, you know, different paved paths and then we know we're gonna have dog walkers, we know we're gonna have kids, strollers, that kind of thing. And so I just think we want to be really careful about programming too many competing uses out there.
Absolutely, and we were hoping to get that, that feedback and tee up the, um, interactive part of our open house, with, with some of those i- ideas that come through. These are some of the big recommendations, um, and, and things that we know either, um, folks living in workforce housing in that area might need, some of the things that BOSAC flushed out, uh, with, with probably an area for other, other ideas. So rather than just having a global, hey, what do you think? Throw every idea up on the board. We want to at least be able to give them some ideas that have been tossed out and some best, best practices, good recommendations also for, for housing.
Okay.
Kind of steer that a little bit.
And we did talk about it today.
Housing today.
In the housing committee.
Great.
And there's lots of opinions.
Yeah, we didn't get too far, did we?
No, I mean, because there's a good reason why they want all this connectivity, and then there's also the reasons that I know are important that some of you have shared your concerns about, you know, we don't need the however many two-hundred e-bikes a day that are getting rented out of town, driving up through the middle of all those people. You know, that are gonna be out there using that pathway. So.
We just, that paved path, we know we have the user conflict on there already, and it just gets worse every time.
There's always you have accessibility if we're, you know, and maintenance, when you don't have paved, it's just pressure vines. And so should we, you know, do we have a section of pressure fine, right? Closer to Coin Valley, so the bikes don't get on it.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of, there's all kinds of ideas.
Glad they're all being discussed. That's all we can do.
But I mean, ultimately, council has the final approval of these things, and so it's got, hopefully, I, I mean, I think this is important, and I've heard from you, so I think whatever, you know, if we have a final recommendation, I'd like to make sure that it, there's an opportunity to, you know, share that with the council, make sure that it could, we kinda have their blessing before we rubber stamp that thing and do it.
Well, I think the McCain discussion at the open house is really valuable, because, yeah, the public will hear from the housing committee and see what perspectives they have. And I know that Chris McGett has just sent some more information too about why, design-wise, why it made sense the way, way originally was discussed. So there's a lot of information that we can bring to the discussion and we put it all in there and y'all can make that call.
Yeah, I think the how, the, the really great thing about the open house that I see is like, hopefully, some of those people who might be actually living in Alta Verde, we might be able to reach out to them, you know, through that. Because design-wise is one thing, we all know, design is one thing, and what people want and how they use it is always different.
And then maybe along those lines, because the open house is such a wonderful opportunity for input to see if either the HLA from Blue Fifty-two or something can put the word out, because it'd be great to have their input and the other of those complexes right there.
Yep.
Okay, anything else? Oh, the only thing I'll say is, I, I feel like the Trail of Tears has to have some reference to Chris Etheridge and not a mining claim. I really think that is the wrong way to go.
I, I know Scott has reached out many times, um, to Monique.
He'll never get a hold of her. It's not even that, it's just.
Yeah.
I mean, there, she's, you know, we, a lot of us knew him.
Yeah.
You know, that was a I, I think it would be a shame to, to miss, miss that.
Hundred percent agree.
If you have suggestions, we'll take them.
Absolutely.
This is Trail, or the Etheridge Trail.
I think our priority is to get, get the name changed, I think.
Yep, yep, so would welcome ideas for sure. It's the Star Plaster, which.
The Etheridge Trail.
Something, maybe.
Chris's Trail.
Trail is appropriate. I mean, the Social Equity Committee was trying to do more historic stuff, I think, but I think it was just because they were at a loss for what else to do.
And that was, that trail's there because he was killed.
Oh, I know. No, I, I knew Chris too.
That trail wouldn't exist.
And I think to do a memorial trail is, then we just say, this is what we're doing. We're making this a memorial trail for Chris. And not, you know, because I think for people that didn't know Chris, they never really knew what that meant.
Right. Oh, yeah, no, I'm, I'm okay with that part. I just, I'd hate to just name it after a plaster and that bit of Breckenridge history then vanishes. You know, so.
And the county also is looking to us to take the lead on that as joint property, so they will hopefully just follow our lead on that.
Good deal.
Do you have a specific, was it the actual memorial trail as the name, or did you?
Oh, I, I, it doesn't, no, I, I'm, I'm open to more creative minds to come up with something, but I hear what Eric's saying is, is have it a memorial for Chris very specifically, you know, and I, I'm fine with that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right, Alta Verde Two McCain Subdivision Town Project Hearing.
Hello again.
I didn't even get to tell her to go fast because she knows how it goes already.
I'm running. Mayor and Council, this is the re-subdivision of the existing McCain parcel. It basically just carves off the parcel for the Alta Verde Two housing that was just recently approved. So it's pretty simple, straightforward, but happy to take any questions.
Anything? Should we talk about the bike path? Just kidding. But this is when I thought we were gonna talk about the bike path, actually.
Sorry.
I was caught off guard. I was caught off guard. Uh, because that's where the picture is. Thank you. All right, uh, short-term rental discussion, exempt versus non-exempt.
Laptop here.
Take all the time you need, trucks.
This is Brad's time, seriously. But while they're doing that, we sent a, uh, email, Shannon forwarded an email to you in the last, uh, hour that I got from Tim Casey, and if you open that email, you'll see that there's an ask in there by FERC to waive, uh, these are, that's a list of the fees associated with the building of the, uh, FERC building where we donated the land on the McCain property. I will tell you that we have, I mean, obviously, um, if, you know, if we were to do, uh, council were to consider anything at all, um, it, to me, um, we wouldn't do anything with water because the water fund has to remain whole, and we can't be donating water. Right? Because we're gonna, then we're gonna need, the town pays that back into the water utility fund. So, and we don't control Upper Blue sanitation. And if, we may still have a few credits left from some money that, you know, where we got credits, but that, those are credits we use for every housing project that we do. And there, there, I think there's only twenty or thirty thousand dollars. There may be twenty or thirty grand left in credits, and that's it. And, uh, you know, so the building permit, that's just, you know, those are our revenues. So if, you know, if we waive that, that's just those, you know, less revenues that we're gonna bring in to, uh, ComDev for that particular project. So really, I mean, if you wanted to do something, there's fifty-seven thousand dollars there. You could do that. That's all I'd recommend. But, um, we've done a lot already too. So.
See, if you waive everything but the water, it's fifty-nine. How's everybody feel about, where, where are you guys sitting on this?
Definitely no for water.
Yeah, definitely no for water.
You know, the other, honestly, I don't know if the other communities are contributing to this. I mean, I hear that some of them won't because they don't support it. They don't support the move.
Yeah.
Has it, Eric, at this point?
Do anything?
I, we've done the land. It's a pretty big piece, I think. I mean, I'm a huge supporter of FERC and building, oh, but I just, you know, I, I don't know.
Okay, Todd?
I would like to support them in some fashion. Certainly, we've done it considerably with the land and agree with Dick there. I'd be on board with a good chunk of that, maybe not the water, but the other stuff.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Pretend it's childcare. And what would you say?
I'm not going there. Um, oh, man, why'd you have to say that? Fine, give it to him, for the kids. Um, yeah, definitely not the water, and I guess I'm okay with waiving the rest. Maybe, maybe we could do like a half of the other fees instead of the whole thing.
But not.
Are you ruling sanitation out?
And then water, no. So it'd just be the fifty-nine thousand. Maybe we could do half of the fifty-nine thousand.
So we're basically talking sixty grand, yeah.
Well, maybe we could do half of that.
So thirty.
Meet him halfway and.
Todd was good with all. He was good with none. You're good with half.
Nothing for water, um. You know, they knew these fees were gonna happen, so I wish this was an earlier conversation to consider. Um, I would be okay with waiving half the cost of the building permit and the others.
Jay?
Where, the, the revenue from the building permit, are we, is, are we still subcontracting? Is that a direct outflow, or is that all in-house?
Well, we, it's most, it's in-house. It's in-house. If we're gonna eat anything, that's what we want to eat, because that really just doesn't, it's not money out, it's just less money coming in. It just, you know, less revenues we receive. Quick clarifying question. Sorry, I don't know if you want to keep going.
No, please.
How much, how much, um, infrastructure dirt work have we invested in this site? Oh, well, we're doing, uh, a few million dollars worth of work on the, uh, lower part of the Stan Miller Drive. It's gonna be created, right, even leading up to that site.
And the utilities, right?
Uh, we lay the lower part of the utilities, correct? Because we have to lay those to the school parcel anyway, so, yeah. We have to lay them along Stan Miller as part of the school deal.
I think Gorman was doing.
From the school to the site. That's Gorman. And that Gorman's actually picking up and, and doing, uh, some of the utilities along there and their, that P up where the shared parking is and part of that, Gorman's, they've got that built into their, uh, pro forma. So they're getting a break on that too. So a couple million, is that what I'm hearing, with the road and such? Looking at Shannon, but. Yeah, I mean, yeah, we have to build road in, but I mean, even for them just to access that site, are we doing other, uh, infrastructure work? Okay, so maybe we're not, Dick. Yeah. But we didn't do any fill to bring it up out of the flood, flood plain? So I'm flexible. I mean, if we're talking sixty grand, I'm flexible.
You know, my mom used to say, like, if I brought to her, her something, I was like, I need to know the answer. She would always say, no. If you need to know the answer right now, the answer's no. Um, and, and so to, to me, it's like giving us a lesson.
Ask that a lot.
Two, uh, two hours, like, like two hours notice saying, hey, here, here's our ask of, you know, a quarter million dollars. I, I think my, my knee-jerk reaction is say, no.
Okay. Uh, my knee-jerk is to say yes, because all about kids. I'm, I'm, not no to water, but everything else I'm fine with, because it's.
So do we have a majority that would do sixty? I can't remember.
One, two, three, four.
I was half.
Oh, you were half, you were half. No, we don't. We have three for half, two for, two for half, three for whole, and one, no.
Yeah, and I started as a no and said I would compromise, so I'd say thirty. Let's do thirty. Can everybody get behind thirty?
And I would still rather do all, but I mean.
All being sixty?
Yep. It's soft cost. I don't, you know what? This is the easiest place for us to give stuff, is my.
I like the investment. We're gonna make it one way or the other. It's my, my two cents.
Think about it.
If you need to, we can. Okay, let's, uh, okay, let's get on short-term. Exempt, non-exempt.
Let's do the fun stuff.
Quick, right? Hi, trucks.
Yeah, there we go. Well, so we had our first meeting a couple of weeks ago on this, um, and, uh, I'm gonna be short here. We just provided some additional information for you to hopefully help prepare you in some of the decisions you have to make. And, uh, one of them was, um, we provided an updated table on the licensing. This is the most updated numbers you see on the first page of the memo. Then we also provided more details on the licensing related to the exempt properties, which are all listed, and the names of the properties on the second page of the memo, Beaver Run, et cetera, down the list. There, there are all those exempt. Seventeen hundred some units total. We also.
We also provided a map, thank you Brad and Sarah, uh, for working on this. It's fine-tuned, the map you saw last time, where it also, and I guess this isn't the one that, uh, is included in the packet, but, um, it fine-tuned it to, yeah, the dark areas that popped up right there, um, are the areas that are specifically called out in the land use guidelines where it says bed base or lodging. So it specifically addresses those issues. So the, the largest area in zone one that's not included in that is, is land use district ten. You can see in the green there, that, um, large area there is, um, does not have that descriptor, cause it's more low density. Even though it has a high percentage.
Residential housing.
Correct, although it has a relatively high percentage of short-term rentals in most of it. So, um, but we did highlight that for you as well. That was a, um, something the council was looking for. And then finally, we, uh, provided a table of all those exempt properties, cause this is part of the discussion we'd like to have with you today, in terms of what, uh.
Get off, would you just explain that the one area that's outside of that part that's included is up at, uh, Tiger Road?
Yeah, thanks, Rick. Yeah, so if you go north, there is one area that has the lodging descriptor up there. And it's really just for a part of land use district six. And it's where the shores and welk are located right now.
Was it in the master plan where they talked about the lodging?
Oh, so it's not in the land use guidelines? It is in the lugs. If you look in the lugs, there's three different descriptors under land use district six and the middle. It's not, it's in the descriptor, but it's not in the, um, it's not in the, the.
Desired character.
Desired character and function language. Yeah, it's not specifically called out there. Okay. So that's why.
Described as rental properties?
No, it's just in applicable, acceptable land uses. But everything I was doing as far as land use, the descriptor, not the acceptable land uses. Because we have other weird acceptable land uses through town that are sort of strange in some of the areas, so. Yeah. Anyway, that's. Yeah, I think one of the ones down here, though we highlighted, is, is that same vein. It probably is just lodging as opposed to in the descrip, um, the, yeah, twenty-eight would be the same kind of category there, which we had not actually included in the recommended zone. Zone one and frankly, everything, at least in the southern part of zone of, of twenty-eight is, we control, that's the ice arena property. Yeah. So.
Hey Mark, what's the red one, eleven, looks like up by French Street?
Purple because of the overlay and the red crosshatching on top of it.
It's brown too?
It's.
Yeah.
Cause that's what I thought it was on our map.
Didn't, just back to the land use for a minute, didn't originally the, the language was some kind of location to skiing, not, not lodging? Yeah, i- in some, some of those descriptors, it definitely talks about bed base for the ski area. Most of them, I think twenty-one through twenty-four do for sure, if you can back off Brad there, so we can.
And we did briefly in the committee talk about, should we put like a radius around walkable to ski? We just, I mean, that was towards the beginning.
Right.
But that was definitely something we were considering in the discussions. To ski lifts.
I think saying lodging clouds the issue even more.
Exactly. I mean, we had said, you know, walkable to ski lifts and what would that walkability look like?
Okay, and then just, if I can just finish then, um, the table, table three that was provided in your packet, outlines the exempt properties, but then also the amenities. What probably a common feature of all these exempt properties is a fair amount of pretty heavily intensive amenities that are provided and have to be provided for those type of uses. Not to say that there are other properties, you know, that do have a pool or something like that. But in general, these ones are, um, have a fairly high level of that and quite a bit of square footage associated with some of them. As you can see, like with Beaver Run, the village, et cetera, with conference facilities and other type of amenities provided. So, um, that's kind of the summary of what we've provided and additional information. We'd like to have a discussion this evening about the exempt versus non-exempt. And then if we can also, if we have time for minutes, maybe start discussing the map and the zones a little more. Okay.
So. I'm a little concerned about how much time we're gonna have and how deep we wanna get into this. I think we.
I think we should just stick to the exempt, non-exempt.
Well, if we can even, or, you know, is there other stuff? We're teeing up a much larger discussion for you in two weeks. We have time on the agenda. We really want to try to get to a place where you feel like you're ready to hone in on some decisions, hopefully. And but, so, I mean, if we, if we could set the stage a little bit for how you might wanna structure that, how, what you wanna do, if we can, you know, if we can take a couple steps forward, that's great. But I am a little concerned about how deep, uh, far down the rabbit hole we wanna get tonight, you know? Knowing that, uh, I mean, it's not the end of the world if I have to push off the e-bike presentation, but, you know, we really need to decide on that, what we're gonna do, honestly, because we've got, uh, grant funds that we have to deal with the state on. So, um, why we wanna wrap, try to allow a few minutes for that.
Okay, so let's start with questions on exempt, non-exempt first.
I, I guess I would ask for another piece of data.
Yeah.
I mean, I think we need disclosure on those properties that have more keys than licenses, lock-offs. I think we need to know, you know, some units have lock-offs, so they actually rent to two, they, they have the capability of renting to two parties simultaneously on the same short-term rental license. And for me, I, I, I just, I wanna understand the numbers. I wanna see what the numbers are. Because, you know, we, we've talked about this being about preservation of workforce housing. We've talked about this, this being, you know, with our capacity issues in town and congestion. You know, is another reason for this and, you know, and I, I think that's a significant consideration. And, and so I just think it's a piece of data that we've just never gotten, that I think would be good to have. Whether we do anything with it or not, I think we need to know that.
Would you like to know the total units, including lock-offs? Cause I can give you that right now.
Yes.
Or are you asking more for like how they're used, if they're more.
Number of total potential rental units.
If you have a lock-off, do you need two licenses or just one license?
Go with them a long time ago.
No, I understand the fee is, but the impacts are magnified. So that's why I'm curious to know. I, like I said, I'm not necessarily advocating we do something with it. I, I don't have any idea what the number is and I, that's significant for me, so I wanna, it's just another disclosure piece.
I can pull it up here in just one second.
Um, is it possible to boil all the amenities and all the space down to one square footage number? Or is that too difficult?
The ones that I provided square footage for, those were readily available in like old plans that we have archived. Um, the ones I didn't provide square footage for, it was a little more obscure, exactly their area. I could reach out individually to each property and try to determine how much area they're using, but.
And here, here's why, I, yeah, I know it's cumbersome, but they all have sort of slightly different things. One has a steam room, one doesn't, one has ski lockers, one doesn't. What if we, what if we had a look and tried to boil the whole thing down to square footage of total amenity space, not counting garage?
And I might take it a step further, I can do it in ratio to the square footage of the entire project. So we know the ratio. Cause that's probably more pertinent to.
Right, as, as we look for a.
Yeah.
Could we look at, uh, I think it'd be valuable in the square footage of any, uh, restaurant and or retail, commercial space on premises?
Yeah.
So like a breakdown of commercial, retail, restaurant, and more aggregate?
Yes, I think the commercials aggregate, but I think the amenities is a separate aggregate.
Aggregate.
We could see the ratio of commercial and then separately see the ratio of amenities.
And maybe somewhere in there, we can figure out a way to work through this.
Well, I think it's what makes this group of properties unique.
Different.
Yes.
That's why I worry about percentage a little bit. Because say you had a thousand square foot room, you're gonna, you come in and say, hey, we, I have twenty percent of what I have is, is a jetted hot tub or a jetted bath.
Well, I, that's why I wanna see gross and per, gross and ratio, gross and percentage.
And did you, these are the one, these are the properties that are currently exempt. Are there any properties that, you know, would have a lot of amenities that aren't, that were not currently considering exempt?
I think there are, but I, I don't know how much. I think overall, that percentage is gonna be considerably less than these. But there's certainly places like Tyra has a pool, you know, things like that, that are out there.
Yeah, not just that has a pool, but has like a considerable number of things, including a shuttle, cause that's definitely on my list.
Well, for, for, for me, there's an absolute list and then there's a variable list, you gotta have so much of, excuse me, this group. The absolute list is the shuttle and twenty-four hour security.
And then amenities and garage parking.
Yeah.
And potentially restaurant and, and some, some commercial and some.
Feel like if we stick with the exempt, we should have some sort of application process to be able to open that gate when we want to. Cause right now, anybody can be, can choose to be exempt. So that's, to me, can choose to be exempt, right? Like, there's no application process.
Oh no, you've gotta meet qualifying factors.
You gotta, you gotta hit the qualifying factors, but.
But it's very low.
It's very low and I'd like a lever where, cause, cause otherwise if, for licenses, if that's kind of a back.
Oh no, yeah, we, I mean, we're looking at things that can't easily be replicated here, but.
Well, and I also think convention space, meeting space is significant.
Can just go into the whole amenity package as a meeting space, because, you know.
Uh, yeah, to me, it's a unique item.
Well, yeah, it is, but there's only one place that has a significant amount of, and if you just put forty-six thousand into their amenity space, that, you know.
Wipes it out.
It puts away.
Ten thousand, I don't know.
Answer your earlier question about lock-off units. So there's only two properties where this applies, Grand Colorado on Peak Eight and Grand Lodge on Peak Seven. And so the total units at Grand Colorado are two fifty-three, that's how the assessor counts units. And then they have eighty-four STR licenses associated with those, cause they're, we only have one license. Um, and then for Grand Lodge, it's two hundred and thirty-three units and seventy-eight short-term rental licenses. But that doesn't really tell us.
Two thirty-three and seventy-eight, sorry, kidding.
That's okay. For Grand Lodge, two thirty-three and then seventy-eight short-term rental licenses. Because those could just be three-bedroom units, that doesn't tell us lock-offs really. Like, cause there's eighty-four licenses, that could just be a bunch of three-bedroom units.
Well, yeah, but the two fifty-three is how many.
How many abilities?
Abilities can come in their own cars and, and, you know, everything else.
So every single room is lock-offable?
Those two properties, yes.
Oh.
They're scheduled separately, so each one of them can be sold fifty-two times, fifty-two weeks.
Every single bedroom?
The other year or.
Okay. I didn't get the, I thought it was like somewhere two bedrooms.
So they could sell, so they marketed it as a three-bedroom, however, they could sell it as three one-bedrooms too.
Correct.
And we're counting it as just one license for?
Yes.
Could be three owners?
We collected per number of bedrooms, so from a licensing perspective.
When, before we had the, the new fee, you know, we had the licenses and there was just, you know, because it was trying to figure it all out, there was an agreement that was worked out between finance and, uh, BGV on how, uh, how we would license it. So, we, we were generous.
My impression is that there's a little bit of a difference of how they got, how they also got scheduled with the assessor's office, because Grand Timber Lodge also has lock-offs. But over there, they're under one schedule, so a two-bedroom or, I don't know that they have three bedrooms at Grand Timber, but let's say that there's a two-bedroom is one schedule. As opposed to in the newer properties, they subdivided them even further. So like a two-bedroom is a suite and a one-bedroom, the suite is actually a studio. And then the one-bedroom is a one-bedroom that's all separate.
And again, sold separately.
And they can be sold separately.
I had no idea.
You wanna delve into this more?
Better we need to know, but, and there, are there any other, are there any other properties anywhere in town that, that have lock-offs for rent? Not, not with individual ownership, but where they rent the lock-off separately?
Yep, the, the Village does, Beaver Run does.
River Mountain Lodge.
River Mountain Lodge.
Cause I'd be interested in, in this graph, I'd like, I'd be interested in seeing the total of all of those units. That's not too hard.
Extracting data on that, uh, my recommendation would be for us to look at the number of bedrooms within our exempt properties and see if that will get us somewhere on trying to figure, because if I'm understanding your question is that you're looking to find out what the usability is.
Well, I'm really trying to look at how many different families are gonna come up at one time. And not, not in, uh, unique families, they don't know each other. They're not traveling together, so they have their individual modes of transportation. They make their own individual reservations for ski rentals and bike rentals and restaurants and everything else. And, you know, the, it, it, I mean, and the reason I'm asking is, is impacts on town, on the.
How many cars they'll bring in, yep.
Everything else, so. So I guess I'm more interested in how many individual ads in Airbnb or wherever they advertise, could they be running on the rental opportunities? And I don't know if we have that data or not, but.
I mean, we could, might be able to give you a, like a worst-case scenario based on.
Maxims, which.
Well, that's what I'm asking. What she said, you got two hundred and thirty-five units where they only have eighty, but you have two hundred, I mean, you could have two hundred and thirty-five different vehicles at any one time.
Oh, I know, and that's shocking to me, so I'm glad I asked.
And a lot, oh, like. Probably the majority of our exempt properties have, I bet the majority of them have that. Cause Beaver Run, I mean, they could, I mean, they can lock off, I think it just ran out, one of the bedrooms is not always on a two-bedroom and.
Yeah. Do that. Let's see how much of it we can get, I mean, let's see where we're going. You know, but I, to me, that's, that's a significant number, cause that's actually how many different groups, different parties are coming up to rent units in recognition, which is what we're talking about.
Do you own this for just exempt properties or all properties?
I- if, if possible, I'm interested in all the properties, but I don't know if that's possible or not. I guess my priority would be the exempt, cause I think from my understanding is that's where the concentration's the highest.
It's interesting that those two properties just added three hundred keys.
Yeah, they did.
Other things for staff to look into? Jay, Carol?
Nope.
Okay.
When we come back at, uh, twenty-fourth, we're, uh, we'll bring some new information, but we're gonna try to focus in on, um, this, these two.
Yeah.
Let's try to hit the, this whole, whether we end up calling them exempt or we come up with a classification, if we're going to, are we gonna deal with them, are we gonna lump them in to the, all the, with the, all the other mix, or we're gonna keep them separate? There's, there's, you know, no right or wrong, but there's certainly different strategies.
Well, once we get this additional information, I think we can make some decisions.
Well, I think, I have one comment on that, I, I do not like the word exempt, because I do not, I, I mean, I think they need to be paid for. I, I do not like the word exempt because I do not, I, I mean, I think they need to be paying for licenses. You look at the level of impact here, I mean, they need to be paying for licenses at minimum, so.
Regulatory fees.
Yeah. Pardon me?
They do pay the regulatory fees.
They do, the, the reason exempt came up is because they were exempt from the cap. They were exempt from the cap and that's how that came up.
Some, there's confusion around that, so I think I would not use the word exempt.
No, I think we all feel that way though, we need to come up with a different category. Right, all right, e-bike?
Yeah, e-bikes quick.
You can stay there, you look good sitting there. Run the show.
All right, I will get us going because I know that you guys are hungry and I am too. I am here with Teddy Wilkinson, our town mobile, our town sustainability and alternative mobility administrator. We're here to talk e-bikes with you. Today's decision for a focused pilot e-bike share program can reduce traffic congestion in Breckenridge by almost sixty four hundred car trips, additionally reducing almost eleven thousand pounds of C O two emissions. Not only will this pilot help in protecting the environment and relieving vehicle traffic on our roads, but as you can see on this slide, it is also going to touch many of the goals the town and county have set for ourselves in regards to sustainability and destination management. Through public outreach and our council presentation in January, we heard very clear concerns and hesitation for this program as it was presented in a broad feasibility context. As you can see in your memo, we're here now with a specific and strategic pilot that we believe has addressed many of the concerns we've heard. For example, the first concern on impacting bike rental shops, rental revenue is addressed in two ways, both by the pricing structure disincentivizing anyone from riding for more than thirty minutes and the bikes being geo fenced in a zone that we can just determine that won't allow the bikes be ridden outside of a specific area. Beyond all of the concerns that we've heard, we believe we've addressed, and we believe we've addressed, as you can see on the next slide, the pilot will be focused around where our workforce lives and the places that they frequent, such as jobs, groceries and transit. In final summary, with the goals and leadership we have, we believe we can execute a well done pilot program starting May of twenty twenty three, so one year from now, for six months. While there will be a cost to the town of around a hundred thousand dollars, we will also be supported with a matching grant of the same amount, effectively giving us a fifty percent discount on this pilot. So while we know there will be some hesitation around e-bikes in Breckenridge, there will never be a better time than now to give it a try due to the low financial risk. With that, Teddy and I are here for questions.
You are quite the salesman. I did not expect that.
For the maintenance, who pays for the maintenance?
The entire program would be hands off to us and we, we still have to go out for an R F P for it, but we know that there's quite a few companies out there that offer this, a Vail starting one, yeah, this month.
That's where your hundred and twenty five thousand dollar cost. We estimate that to run the pilot for a year would be about a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cost. So the grant covers half and we cover the other half and that cost is maintenance and the company doing all of that, the bikes, everything.
What's typically like the, the accountability on the producer of this? Um, you know, I think one of the concerns I have is just having dysfunctional bikes.
Yeah, there would be some level of a percentage of downtime similar to what we have with our buses. We always account for it, we know it's going to happen and it's always out there. So while there is a concern for it, there's going to be an acceptable level that will say, well, we might have sixty five bikes, they need to actually have eighty, so we always have sixty five in service.
Understood, thank you.
So that's sixty numbers what we have in service, not total bikes.
That would be the goal, we would work through that and obviously our, our budget would dictate that.
So how does it, how does it work with? Does a community member go and get a special card somewhere or is that something that we would?
Yep, we have.
Walk me through that.
Yeah, we, we have a few different options. The one that is in my mind is more like an app similar to the Uber app or even the Lime scooter type thing in Denver where somebody would sign up and if it's a community member, they would show through scanning their I D that they're a local community member and therefore they've been justified to be a free ride for thirty minutes. And if somebody doesn't have that, you know, they, they would be paying the rate.
Thirty minutes a day?
We would have to decide that, I don't think so. I think that'd be per trip and we would have to set some sort of limitation of how long between each trip. You know, you wouldn't want to check it out, check it right back in, check it out. But we can figure that out and, you know, a grocery trip or whatever it might be, drop off your dry cleaning, those types of things. Maybe it's a thirty minute window that you have to wait to get it.
Hey, Matt, would you be open to making it workforce instead of community member?
We would, the only reason that we have it as community as well is we really do want to gather the data just to say that it's out there, that there is a demand for it just in case there really is, or maybe there isn't. And, and as you can see in the numbers, it is pretty cost prohibitive to keep it for longer than thirty minutes. I mean, if I was a tourist and I wanted to ride the bike for thirty minutes, great, but after that thirty minute timeframe, I mean, you're at a hundred and fifty dollars you know, an hour, that's, that's obviously more than you're paying for an e-bike, yeah, go buy an e-bike.
Thank you for putting the hubs at the workforce housing and for making them all dock. I think that those were both really terrific moves.
Thank you, and we put a lot of thought into the locations, but they are absolutely up for discussion. We don't have anything pinpointed, but that's our current suggestion.
How, are they, I'm assuming they were hardwired, the dock locations?
It depends, they can be both hardwired or they can be removable. The batteries themselves and the ones that we would look at are actually batteries are removable. So the battery is always drawing power at the bike, so the bike can be checked out, so the actual rack won't be powered.
So if you had a, if you had a rack that wasn't really working, you could fairly easily move it to a different location?
Take it out, correct.
Who would handle maintenance and day to day stuff that's going on with these things?
Same thing with the external company, so we would be hands off, we'd pay somebody to do it, all part of the budget.
Do you know if there's the ability to customize the paint, you know, the previous bike share deal that was in town, kind of, just an eyesore?
The clown, the clown bikes, yes.
Yeah, the clown bikes, no, could, like, if this was successful, could we have, like, customized, like, branding and?
Absolutely, we can, we can make it our own, just the simple one that's up there right now is, is somebody's own version and we can make it our own.
Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Other questions? What do you guys think?
Great. Thanks for bringing it back in a better form.
When I first saw it, but I love this version of it. I would like to see it workforce, but, you know, for the pilot, we could do a community, but I just, just to do more for the workforce is.
And it's really, they'll have an enjoyable commute instead of getting stressed out on their commute.
Right.
I think it's awesome, good work.
Sorry, Eric. So if I get up in the morning and I live at Altavertie and I take a bike and I drive into town and there's no room at a dock, what do I do?
There'll be some sort of contact, either it's a Q R code or some sort of phone number, either on your app or whatnot that says, I'm here and I don't have a station.
Okay.
We will either redirect you if it's simple enough, if you're a hundred feet away, or we're going to figure out a way to get out there. That company will get out there and take care of the bikes.
Okay. The only other thing I'll say is I think it's good that it's community members because while I, it's great to give stuff to workforce, we want people out of their cars, that's what this is about, this is not a perk for anybody, this is, don't drive. So the more, the more people that live here that would use this, the more this makes sense. If, I think if we limit that, that's not the way to go, so. So I support it, believe it or not.
Ooh, I did not.
I'll bring that selling.
Get that recorded?
Selling a ketchup popsicle to a woman in white gloves, as they say. All right.
Thank you, enjoy your dinner.
All right, and with that. Right on time, Rick? That's an oldie.
That is.
I think what's the Tommy Boy line?
For sure. I don't know if we sold it or not.
Land.
Yeah, I don't know if we sold it or not.
We would know if we owned it, right?
Sold it, didn't we? Yeah.
Part that came up recently?
Yeah. Yeah.
One piece or is it all?
Pulled the water rights off, yeah.
Oh, wow.
There you go, Glenn organized all that stuff too. And with that. We'll call the town council Tuesday, May tenth, twenty twenty two to order, it is seven P M, roll call, please.
Ms. Owens. Mr. Carlton.
Here.
Mr. Bergeron, absent. Ms. Sade. Mr. Rankin.
Here.
Mayor Mamula.
We have town council meetings for, meeting minutes for April twenty sixth, any changes? Everybody good with them? Minutes stand as presented, agenda, Rick, any changes?
No changes.
Agenda stands as presented, communications council, we start with citizens comments, these are non-agenda items only, three minute time limit, please. Anyone in the audience wish to comment tonight? And with that, the public hearing for citizens comments is closed. We have an update from the Breckenridge Tourism Office and Lucy Kay. Hi, Lucy.
Wasn't quite done writing.
Oh, you're good free.
Anyway, good evening, good to see everybody, I like. Couple of things, we can close out winter lodging numbers, we got the April thirty one D M X report. So we finished the winter for occupancy and room nights, both up eleven percent. The reason they're the same is because we had a little less room availability. So that, that's, you know, eleven percent on top of a decent year, the year before. What's really significant is A D R was up thirty percent, so we're going to see a nice bump in revenue for lodging for the winter. Per our numbers are on the street intercept surveys, our winter day visitors were up thirty seven percent. So that's not all just Colorado, that's, you know, day visitors coming in from other towns, just anybody who's not staying here overnight. So that's pretty significant and I think it plays into the feeling of crowdedness because they're moving in and out of here with cars.
Lucy, is that?
Yeah.
Just they don't stay in Breckenridge or county?
Stay in Breckenridge, so it could be somebody coming in from Copper Mountain, something like that. Our Colorado total for the winter was fifty three percent of total work Colorado and that's overnight and day together. M P S scores we've been talking about, they've been down, we ended up at seventy four percent. It was eighty percent in nineteen, in nineteen, twenty nineteen and twenty. And then with that drop, most of the drop is with the in-state people. Like the out of state people gave us higher marks than the Colorado people, we had more Colorado people that pulled it down a bit more. So we've got that piece going.
Coloradoans, is that?
Well, they have, pardon me.
Is that typical of previous years?
It's always the Colorado and locals are always a little tougher raiders in the out of state. And that, that's normal. We looked at consumer confidence index and because it's, you know, dropped dramatically in twenty twenty, climbed back up was pretty good. Right now, we're looking at levels that are comparable to two thousand seventeen, so it's not overly optimistic, but I think it's healthy. Looking forward for summer, right now, we've got about forty two percent of what we'll probably have on the books, on the books today. Occupancies up fifteen percent and room nights are up twenty one percent. And one thing I will point out, just to throw a little cold water on the fire, the pace of booking in the last two months has been down significantly. So the rate of growth of summer bookings has been dropping. And Bill and I looked at this stuff and we talked about it this morning and we're going to bet that we're going to end up flat for the year, flat to last year in occupancy and room nights. And that's a function, I think, of inflation and just people, you know, just getting a little bit more conservative until they see what's happening with the economy and some other things. So while it looks right, good right now, I expect that a month from now when I'm here, that, those numbers will be a little less.
Do you think A D R will stay elevated or will that come down?
A D R right now for the summer is pretty flat to last year, it's like two dollars more, which is insignificant. And my guess is it's going to come down. I don't think that, that kind of inflation on lodging prices can be maintained. We're not quite as high as the D M X total, like our percent of increase is thirty percent, the D M X totals like thirty eight, but I don't think too many people do think that's sustainable for this summer.
Thank you.
Let's see, couple of things, I'll, I'll be pretty quick here. We're doing a welcome center redo, not a real remodel, but we, we're going to have, we're going to turn it into a be like Breckenridge space. So I'm so glad to hear that Joan Agus likes that, so you can take a picture and send it to him. We promise that nothing is getting attached to walls. Tess has been really good about working with, well, Jesse Burley was involved early on, looking at what we were doing and we've incorporated her input. And Tess has been working with Matt from facilities, so everything we're doing, we believe is okay, nothing's get attached to walls and, you know, it can come down quite easily, but it's going to be big and green and look like be like Breckenridge. So that should be ready mid-June if everything stays on schedule. We are progressing with work with I seventy. Coalition Communication Group, I don't know that we have a formal name, I think I talked about it the last time, but just being, you know, proactive with messaging with potential closures because of Glenwood and what that's going to do, the Silver Thorn. And, you know, with the rollover this morning, I mean, you know, it's already happening, that, that truck had to come right off I seventy on Highway nine and flip, it was, I wasn't sure I was going to get here today. But anyway, so that work is progressing and then to bring that more locally, we have gone ahead and pulled all references on our website. We've pulled all the references to free parking on Airport Road. You know, it's still going to be there, just because we pull it doesn't mean no one is going to go there to park, but we're not encouraging that and rather encouraging people to come into town, closer to town in the paid parking, just so we don't have that extra inconvenience on Airport Road. So we'll see how that, hopefully that helps a little bit. And then, yeah, that's it, Oktoberfest, we're extending timeline with our potential sponsor, maybe another week. And Majae and I talked today, we're going to say, you know, by the end of this week, next week, we're going to, it'll be a go or no go call, which will be tough if it's no go, but that's where we are. Questions?
Yeah.
Feel free to lean in.
I have a question about Oktoberfest.
Yes.
Do we use plastic cups at Oktoberfest?
No, we, we did, we used to. And we have, actually, I just approved the order today, we do aluminum, so they're recyclable.
We, are you using the ball aluminum? Okay, I've been talking with them.
Yeah.
I'm going to talk to these guys about in other matters, but good. It was one of the things I had talked to them about was doing our Oktoberfest.
Yeah.
Aluminum, so.
Yeah. Oh, you know, it's about a twenty thousand dollar expense, but, you know, we, we approved that this morning.
Again.
Oktoberfest, we have a lot of extra cups if you need.
Logo them or are you logoing them?
We decided not to because, just because of the stage of go or no go, so we're going to do it without. We have some leftovers from Brektoberfest, we did aluminum cups there, so we've got about sixteen thousand of those, but we still have to order, we need like sixty thousand.
As we go forward, because we would, I, once we talk, I would like to, it's a hundred thousand to logo them and I think it'd be great to do just town of Brek logo aluminum for everything we do, so then we could talk about.
You know, that's a great idea, Eric, we probably can still pull back what we did this morning and take a look at that and see if there's other entities that want to come in on an order like that, or we can just do it and then, you know, sell it back at cost if somebody wants it.
Great.
Okay.
Awesome.
Anything else? Thanks.
Thanks, Lucy. Uh, Breckenridge Ski Resort update, Jody.
Hi.
Hi.
How's everybody doing? Good. Fill in black, it's still winter up at Brek Ski Resort. Thanks for bringing the sunshine, Lucy. Yeah, I'll do a little bit of reflection on the winter. A little tall here. And a recent announcement, so I'll get started, here we go, I'm pleased with how our winter. A little tall here. Um, and a recent announcement. So I'll get started. Here we go. I'm pleased with how our winter went. It was a bit of a roller coaster out of the gate with our weather, um, and, and COVID still raging when we started, but I'm almost to my one-year mark. So pretty happy about that. I know. Hard to believe. Uh, so I'll start just with a quick reflection on where we are at right now with our spring operation. And, uh, we had our pond skim, which was really exciting. It was fun to bring that event back. And we had a great crowd. Really great event. Toyota was our, uh, premier, premier sponsor and, um, really happy with the way it turned out. So it was a great, great event. Good to see our events coming back to life. Um, we just recently closed the Rocky Mountain Super Chair on Sunday. So that was the end of that. Um, but we are still operating thirteen hundred acres. So we're open with most of our high alpine terrain, although the last few days we've had quite a bit of wind challenges. So we're currently open with Peak six, seven, and eight. And, uh, we're aiming to run through Memorial Day. We'll see. It got pretty high, as Matt and I talked about earlier. It was in the mid-sixties today. So we'll see how long we can hold on, and we'll make sure to give everybody an update if, if anything changes, but we're shooting for Memorial Day. We are offering free parking and our shuttle service up to the mountain right now. Um, as you all know, the gondola is, uh, in the dark period until the middle of June. Visitation, I'll give you a quick recap. Just to level set, this is company-wide. This is across veil resorts, um, comparison to last season, uh, versus a normal season. So twelve and a half percent up from last season and two-point-eight percent up from our normal season. So if you recall, that in the prior year was significantly impacted by COVID nineteen. And as expected, twenty-one, twenty-two season significantly outperformed twenty-twenty-one. So past growth is up, but this is not driven dramatically by visitation growth. As always, has been the case in the ski industry, we are seeing, you know, our peak days have been the same as they always have. But what we're, what we are seeing different is that we're seeing a trend of spreading visitation out. Growth mid-week and non-holiday, uh, is where we're really seeing the big impact. So weekends and holiday visitation on average remained flat and the increase in visitation came from the weekdays. We also saw peak visitation at our resorts, very consistent with previous years. Less peaks and valleys and more steady visitation was great news and right-on strategy. Uh, we did not see any record visitation days here at Brek Ski Resort this year. It's pretty nice to be popular and have our community so full of people and actually in such a consistent way this season. Uh, I did wanna talk a little bit about our lift optimization. Um, as some of you or many of you might know, we really focused on how we were loading chairs and gondolas this year. Uh, we had a whole task force, um, around this effort to really make sure that no chairs went unseated, so that people were spending time on the mountain and on the chair and not so much in line. Um, and we feel really good about that. I also talked earlier, um, in one of my updates around flow and circulation and the addition of the Freedom Chair over on Peak Seven was a huge hit. Big win. Really happy with that chair, being able to create that circulation over on Peak Seven and really serving Peak Six. So that was a big one. And the other, the other area that I wanted to point out is our success with our egress with the, um, ski back to the gondola parking garage as well as ski back to town. We did collect data on that, and we're really pleased with how many people were actually skiing back to their cars and to their hotels. So great success there. As you know, we're investing in a new lift this year, so we've already started construction on Rip's Ride. The ending, um, terminal is, is moved just slightly for better access, um, to get you over to Peak Nine and also to get you back on four o'clock to be able to ski back down at the end of the day. So we're excited for that. And, um, it'll make a big difference for our ski and ride school terrain, um, and for our beginners. So excited for that. All right, investing in our employees. Last time I was here, I talked about the big new direction and the announcement of a hundred and seventy-five million dollar investment in our employees. Uh, that's wages, affordable housing, and H R upgrades. And I just wanted to follow up with everyone today to, to talk about the progress that we've made in the affordable housing. Um, we announced additional housing projects and the availability coming, in the coming season in several of our resorts, as many of you know, and the Town of Vale, Park City, Whistler, Black Home, and some of our eastern resorts. And we remain committed to looking for opportunities to partner here in Breckenridge for affordable housing. And, um, yeah, we look forward to continuing those conversations and, and looking for either new housing, uh, pursuing additional leases in existing properties or other innovation, innovative solutions that we can come up with. So a quick look ahead, we will plan to open for summer operations on June seventeenth and will be open daily through Labor Day. Uh, the Brek Gondola, Brek Connect and, uh, Epic Discovery will be operating. So the gondola hours will be nine-thirty to six. Epic Discovery will be open from ten to five. Everything will be based out of Peak Eight. There will be some minor adjustments, given our construction for Rip's Ride. We won't be able to operate our kid zip and our kids tubing. Uh, we are moving the rest of the kids challenger course over to the, to the other base in Peak Eight. So no zip lines this summer and no tubing. And so that's really all the information and the update for any, any other news, um, anything that changes from that, we'll give you guys an update. Uh, I did wanna just give you a quick one. We are planning to submit our master development plan here any day to the U. S. Forest Service. So that's our ten-year vision that we're excited to get that rolling. And, um, yeah, we're on point.
Questions for Jody.
Jody, can you talk about the master plan you're gonna present to the Forest Service?
I mean, I can give you just a brief, a pretty broad-stroke overview, but we're really looking at better, not bigger. Um, and thinking about really our lift upgrades and how we can, we're really focused on our ski and ride school, um, beginner and learning zone. So you'll see quite a bit of focus on our portal lifts and our ski, ski school zones.
So no boundary expansion?
They're not bigger, Dick.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Great, thank you.
Thanks, Jody.
Thanks, you guys.
All right, we go on to second reading of council bills, series twenty-twenty-two. The first, I'll read the first one and you can do your thing, and then we'll just go right after that, one after another. Uh, the first one's Council Bill number eleven, series twenty-twenty-two. It's an ordinance conforming the town code to the Colorado Clean Indoor Air Act.
Mayor, council, these, um, first five bills on second reading have not changed since first reading. They're mostly in the nature of conforming us to new state laws from twenty nineteen through, uh, twenty-twenty-one. And, um, and the, the, a number of these bills are reorganizing Title Four and just to make them more user-friendly. So if you have any questions, let me know.
I didn't come. I had a sneeze that was loaded. Just, uh, questions for staff on this or the next four after this? So the next five, we're gonna handle one at a time, but together. Do, does anybody know how to make a motion since Jeffrey's? You guys doing? Have you planned?
I'll do the first one.
All right. Um, anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading of Council Bill number eleven? Second reading of Council Bill number eleven. The public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move that we pass Council Bill number eleven, series twenty-twenty-two, and ordinance conforming the town code to the Colorado Clean Indoor Air Act.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have, uh, Council Bill number twelve, series twenty-twenty-two. It's an ordinance amending and relocating retail tobacco licensing. Kirsten's already given the thing. Are there any questions of staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? Is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion on second reading that we pass Council Bill number twelve, series twenty-twenty-two, the title of which has been read into the record.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
S. Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have Council Bill number thirteen, series twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance reorganizing and relocating alcoholic beverages and marijuana licensing regulations. Is there any questions for staff? Are there any questions for staff? Is there anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? Public comment is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move that we pass Council Bill number thirteen, series twenty-twenty-two, and ordinance reorganizing and relocating alcoholic beverages and marijuana licensing regulations.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have Council Bill number fourteen, series twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance amending the general offenses of the Breckenridge Town Code pertaining, pertaining to the conduct of a minor in possession of tobacco. Any questions for staff on this one? Anyone in the public wish to comment on the second reading? Well, uh, motion, please.
I move that we, uh, pass on second reading, Council Bill number fourteen, series twenty-twenty-two, and ordinance amending the general offenses of the, of the Breckenridge Town Code pertaining to the conduct of a minor in possession of tobacco.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have second reading of Council Bill number fifteen, series twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance authorizing the town clerk to administratively approve festival permits.
Mayor, I, uh, I move on second reading that we approve Council Bill number fifteen, series two thousand twenty-two, an ordinance authorizing the town clerk to administratively approve festival permits.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Now.
You never know.
There's no public.
You never know.
Anyone in the public wish to comment on this one? Public hearing's closed.
You know, I like to follow the rules.
Roll call. You are a rule follower, chief.
Mr. Beckerman.
You know, that's not true.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, Council Bill number sixteen, series twenty-twenty-two. This is an ordinance conforming the code to the charter pertaining to municipal court.
Mayor, uh, council members, this is, um, a bill in the nature of, um, cleanup. It had just a few minor, um, i- issues around the authority of the municipal judge as well as an outdated taper provision. And so we just cleaned it up in conjunction with the appointment of the judge.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? It's under a second. Yeah, we did it last time.
Um, on second reading, I move that we pass Council Bill number sixteen, series twenty-twenty-two, and ordinance conforming the code to the charter pertaining to the municipal court.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin. Ms. Owens. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right, a couple of first readings. The first is Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty-twenty-two. It's an ordinance amending the Development Code pertaining to off-street parking requirements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I thought you were just gonna read it all. As Eric, the mayor, said, this is the first reading of the Parking Code Amendment Bill, um, which adds shared parking agreements and maximum parking.
Any questions for staff? Anyone in the cup, public wish to comment on this first reading? No, the public hearing, Matt shaking his head, no. Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
In Council Bill number seventeen, series twenty-twenty-two, an ordinance amending the Development Code pertaining to off-street parking requirements. Move to approve?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any farther, further discussion? What's it farther discussion? I don't even know what that means. Public hearings closed. Roll call, please.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mr. Beckerman. Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have, uh, second, uh, first reading of Council Bill number eighteen, series twenty-twenty-two. It's an ordinance amending Chapter Five, Title Two of the Breckenridge Town Code pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Liquor and Marijuana Licensing Authority.
This is the last in the, um, group of tobacco-related bills. This is going to expand the jurisdiction of the L. M. L. A. Licensing Authority in order to have them process retail tobacco licenses.
Excellent. Questions? The public wish to comment on this first reading this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that on first reading, we pass, uh, Council Bill number eighteen, series twenty-twenty-two, and ordinance amending Chapter Five, Title Two of the Breckenridge Town Code pertaining to the jurisdiction of the liquor, the liquor and marijuana licensing authority.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Beckerman. Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have one resolution this evening. It is Resolution Number Eleven, series twenty-twenty-two. It's a resolution ratifying the appointing of two electors to serve on the election commission for a two-years term.
Mayor and council, this resolution would appoint Jennifer Schaffert and Eli Yoder to serve on the election commission as per Breckenridge Town Char- Charter, and these terms would be two-year terms.
Thank you, Ellen. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
I move that we pass Resolution Number Eleven, series twenty-twenty-two, the title of which has been read into the record.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Sade.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yes.
Mr. Beckerman. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Okay, we have planning commission appointment. Do we have ballots?
No.
That's okay. We have paper. I have lots.
Ballot or?
We usually do, but we didn't prepare.
Sorry. You don't want us to do it by ballot?
Oh, I think that's fine. Um, either way, or, or it sounded like you had kind of coalesced.
We did. Mark, we didn't prepare ballots, did we?
Well, I think we blame Truckee for that one, then. He's a planning director. I know. Just write it on a piece of paper, but don't make it a piece of paper. People will know who you are.
Paper has who you're voting for and who you are.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, say that again.
You have to put your name on it as well as the candidate name.
After I'm not voting for myself.
Kind of like. It was so good.
Kind of like school, you get a failing grade if you don't put your name on it.
Kirsten will.
You know, figure out who you are.
It was from ten.
Right? Hang on, I gotta, I gotta.
We're going to you.
Yeah, majority.
Election official. It's like we have more than seven. Somebody double vote. I think, I think Dick stuffed in the ballot box.
Oh, somebody wrote for Jeffrey.
Just, just for Truckee.
He's great with rules and code.
With rules and codes.
It's a housekeeping issue.
It's a housekeeping issue. I thought that was great that she put that in there just because Jeffrey wasn't gonna be here. Just housekeeping.
Hey, we have, uh, one vote for Ian Hamilton and five votes for Ethan Greer.
There you go. Well done. Uh, will you let them know? Awesome. Thank you. Or one of your minions. Like Kool-Aid. Righty. Uh, that is the appointments. Planning Commission decisions. Anybody have a follow-up? I didn't think so. Planning Commission's decisions stand as presented. Altivert eight-two, May McCain subdivision town project public hearing.
Again, this is the proposal to re-subdivide the existing McCain parcel.
in order to create the subdivision or the lots and parcels for the Alta Verde 2 housing parcel. Happy to take questions.
Are there questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this application this evening? No? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion? And if you'd like to, there is a motion right on the front page of the packet.
I make a motion to approve McCain subdivision tracks A-1, C-1, Lot 1, replat Alta Verde 2, town project hearing PL 2022 0098 with the attached findings and conditions.
There is a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the council? Roll call, please.
Ms. Owens.
Yes.
Mr. Rankin.
Yes.
Ms. Sade. Mr. Beckerman.
Yes.
Mr. Carlton.
Yeah.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have the report of town manager and staff.
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. I was like that. Rob reported to the mayor and council. We did have an MMC meeting. Superintendent of Schools, Tony Anthony Byrd, who said, call him Tony. Seemed pretty nice. He didn't really say much. He told us, yeah, it's gonna, I'm gonna miss Roy. Roy's been great in our MMC meeting, so I'm gonna miss him. What else did we talk about, Rick?
We had Jen Shank there for pay as you throw.
We talked about pay as you throw.
She's coming here to do a presentation in June.
I don't, I maybe, so Frisco's already passed it. Maybe the county will, maybe we will. I don't really see Dylan or Silverthorne doing it. But we talked about a lot of things. We talked about single, single hauler. We talked.
Yeah.
That was my other matter.
Oh, single hauler. Yeah. I mean, we talked about it. We didn't, we just talked about stuff like that. We talked about the whole pay as you throw thing, so.
Well, one of the biggest things that really hit home is that if we don't do something to change the trajectory, that our landfill will close in 2056. That it will reach capacity and there's not another alternative.
Is there any discussion about, because part of the issue with pay as you throw is that there's some concern that people will actually pay more, even though, you know, there is potential that you could pay less. But the concern about paying more is obviously more important to people. So it seems like instead of waiting until we have to close the dump for scrap, that we would start charging people now, knowing that we need to get the capital to, I don't know what you do, dig another dump.
That's an option, Kelly.
Hauling it out of county is the only option. Plus, there are also costs that will go on forever with the current dump. There's a maintenance fee. Really, what the, the point of pay as you throw is just extending the life of the dump. You continue the way it's going right now. What is that, 30 years? If you can start diverting more stuff, starting with recycling and then maybe composting. Sounds like one of the big problems is building materials and building waste is a big deal. You know, start changing some attitudes about plastic water bottles and stuff like that. Maybe you can extend the light to the point that there's some other technology at that point to replace landfill. So that's, I think that's where pay as you throw and HC3 should be. I think that should be the message, not recycling is good for the planet. I think the message should be, we got it, we have to do this now, or it's gonna be really expensive to haul garbage somewhere else in 30 years.
Well, and also more specific is save the planet. I mean, the methane that will not be released by, by pay as you throw and many other considerations, so.
There are still definitely some cost discussions that I don't know how we get around them because they don't really have any answers for us. But one way to make sure that pay as you throw would not be more expensive is to have a single hauler in the community. That is a huge leap, I think, for us to make. But I think it's something we should at least.
Can we do it legally? Commercial and residential? There's some rules around that, that.
We should have.
Very complicated.
Yeah. And Jesse knows a lot about it. She could come.
Because I always was under the impression we couldn't.
I'm sorry. So the question is whether you can do pay as you throw for both commercial and residential?
No, whether we could go with a single hauler in town.
Oh.
That the town would negotiate a set fee to drive the cost down.
Around not creating a monopoly. I have done that research long ago. We can, we can provide you something on that.
That'd be great.
Hear that. I guess I'd love to hear it with other options to make it happen. Yeah, cuz I think that's one of the only answers I, I just.
Well, in bail, they do have two haulers.
And it does work.
Yeah, and it works and they've had it a long time. I mean, honestly, this is not cutting-edge stuff. Like, a lot of mountain communities have been doing this for.
Wonder who their haulers are.
A long time. It's Timberline and Waste Management, and I have their pricing. But it's a little different because bail, pretty much everyone keeps their trash outside. And so they have to have a wildlife-proof container, which takes a lot longer to open up. And so they have like a fee, but they won't share what the, what that fee is. And so Jen's been trying to get us this information. We've been talking about it for a couple of months. And I mean, we have some information, but you just can't compare apples to apples. And so, you know, the single hauler, you, we could negotiate a rate and know what it is a year ahead going into this. So we know what kind of decision we're making. But the alternative is not knowing exactly, but knowing approximately, and knowing that most people who, you know, make the effort could go to a smaller bin. And if you're at a smaller bin, you probably will be paying less than you are now. But it's just nothing that they can commit to. So.
More to come.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then the initial cost of the bins.
Yeah, and there, yeah, that's like up for discussion, but maybe there would be some sort of grant, you know, money or the county or HC3 or some of those strong future funds might be available for that, so.
Right. I think that's all of our hope.
So we'll be seeing that soon enough. The other piece of news that came out of MMC, Frisco was gonna do fireworks. And DREC told them no.
Oh, really?
DREC shot him down. And honestly, with what is going on in New Mexico right now, my brother was just evacuated from Los Alamos, so they're driving to Boulder.
Scary on two fronts.
There's two huge fires in New Mexico right now. Thanks, go.
Uh?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. That, the lab is really a pretty scary thing with, the fire's only three miles from the lab right now.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. So it's a, it's a concern.
Yeah, we don't want that place to burn.
No. So I'm afraid that's our future this summer is just this, you know, I think it's gonna be dry like James was saying, or snowpack is down. I think everything we can do will be great. So that was about it for MMC. All right, open space. He's on vacation, so we'll skip that. Mr. Carlton, tourism.
You know, that's my first meet. I'm gonna throw to Jay, if you remember. Lucy just did a bit of an update.
Yeah.
I'm trying to think what, what was in addition that she didn't go over.
Well, we decided to, or they decided not to expand the board at this time. They're trying to fill the current slots and really just over the, the remote work, things that we were talking about over dinner about like what remote work is doing.
And I'll take notes at my next meeting.
Excellent. Great. Breckenridge history.
We have not had a meeting, but Larissa passed on some updates. So the Milne project is moving along. They've submitted building permits and hope for next month. They open for the summer starting June 1st. The Welcome Center Downstairs Museum is getting a facelift. And finally, they are updating their website and the new Breck history branding with everything.
Nice. All right.
Creative arts.
Couple of things. We had a, a meeting last Thursday. Spread the word about the town party on June 16th from four to nine. That's the Riverwalk. Ken Miller's gonna be managing the airstage block parties, hoping to do three of those in different neighborhoods in Breck. So stay tuned there. Gonna need some help on SEPA to fast-track that. Brett Create Summer Season Announcement should be out this week, so stay tuned for that. But basically, NRO, the NRO is gonna be the single provider of orchestral music in the community, which is great.
That is great.
Should see the airstage up at the Barney Ford parking lot at least twice a month this summer, activating for family activities and including open studios there with the resident artists, which is amazing. Biff is coming back after two years, so stay tuned for that. And then one of the pieces of that should be really neat is, and I may say this wrong, Palobulus is this kind of dance troupe that will be doing some work in open spaces and basically public art throughout town. So that'll be, from what I saw in the advertisements, it looks awesome. So stay tuned for that. And then we've got last, and I think this is gonna be super neat. Carol, this may tie into the Social Equity Commission. There's an LA artist that's gonna come and interview local workforce and historically underrepresented marginalized labors and then do some sketching. So if there's any town employees, if any staff has anybody that would be a good fit there, if anybody from your businesses, get them in touch with Tamara or Avery. And that's, yeah, that's the summary.
Excellent. Events?
Here is a memo. Very short meaning. I don't think there's anything outside that.
Childcare.
Just real quick, before I hit childcare, pull up just a couple notes from the BTO meeting, April 28th, that I thought was worth mentioning is that Lucy was able to find a, or not find, for her to slip, hire a new finance director to replace LeAnn. LeAnn was with the organization for a long time, and even then, figure how he is and was with us before that. And so she's kind of training this new guy, Aaron, who seems great and seems to be on the ball. And so that's extremely exciting. And then the other thing that she wanted me to mention was House Bill 117 passed, which allows diverting lodging taxes to tourism, to tourism-related. And that was, that's kind of disconcerting to her, you know, when, when you kind of think about what happened to Colorado back in what, what was it, like the 1980s when Colorado stopped tourism and marketing? That it took us a decade to recover. And, and the fact that, you know, to protect that, and we'll see, we'll probably be seeing some effects from that in coming years. From childcare, we had a meeting on May 4th. I believe that we will be, it'll be on the agenda on the May 24th meeting with full minutes. But it was really discussing the, a consultant provided us with a RAMA, a rough order of magnitude for adding capacity to each of the four childcare centers and kind of what that would look like and what would it cost? And, you know, it really runs a gamut between $45,000 a student to up to $255,000 a student. So just kind of thinking about how to present that and what makes, what's the low-hanging fruit? And where to begin with, with adding additional capacity. One of the things that was really talked about was how preschool is not a concern right now, and it's really that infant and toddler age group. But it does bring up some some difficult questions in the fact that the toddlers or the preschools, what pays for the infants and the toddlers? And the fact that infant and toddler classrooms are lost leaders and, and how to manage that and how to kind of navigate that as we go through. There was a number that was thrown out that the, the, the new childcare center in Smith Ranch costs $10 million for about 70 kids. And if that's the case, how does that fit in with the other expansion options that we have? Especially looking at, you know, McCain property. That's pretty much where we went off.
Nice job. Notice he's not giving everything away.
He didn't even bring it to us.
Work for us Housing.
Um, do you want to do, I'll do it if you, if you want. I think we got a lot of the update. We went over the five-year, you know, reporting mechanism, which, which was really good. We spent some time talking about housing helps and how we can try to bolster that a bit. Our, our buy-down program is, is on fire. We talked about that a touch. Let's see. What else do we talk about, Todd?
We spent a lot of the stuff that we talked about already.
Yeah.
Bike path and things like.
Yep, exactly. We touched base. CMC building, which was, which was great that, that we're gonna pursue that. Lot, that, that is a busy committee. It's a lot going on with that staff.
It's good staff, too.
Yeah, it's a great staff.
Excellent. Thank you.
Did we put? Did we put an RFP out for the stable slot?
Yes.
Yes.
First, Dulson?
Yes.
Dulson? Yeah. Okay. Great.
And we touched base on public works and had some ideas about that as well. But that's not, you know, we don't have concrete plans yet. We brainstormed a little bit with that one.
Have we ever, you know, I, I don't even know why this just popped in my, my head. There was that article in the paper about that. There's an organization that buys, tries to help people that are in mobile home parks.
Thistle. It's called Thistle.
Thistle, yeah. Have we ever thought about using some of our property to just build a mobile home park? Or is the density not high enough? Maybe a pretty cheap way for us.
Thank you everyone to go down that road.
No?
Not sure we've really looked at that.
Okay. I don't know. That's something we think about someday.
We looked at one time, remember we talked about McCain putting those little modular things?
Yeah.
At the RV park?
Yeah.
And what that would look like, but.
Right.
It never got a lot of traction.
Yeah. I'd be all in favor of buying our local RV park or our local, our local mobile home park if that ever came up for sale, but I don't think that's, guys ever gonna sell it. Anyway. Social equity.
There is a meeting this coming Monday at 9:00 AM, and that'll be a really good meeting if anyone wants to listen in, where the commission will be taking the first look at reviewing the equity lens and equity blueprint, which is the work we've been doing with the consultant.
Cool. Awesome. Thank you. All right, other matters. Nothing? Anything? We did, didn't we? I got a couple. And they're long, so settle in. The first one, some of you may know, Joe Nagus was here for CMC commemoration or commencement and had called me a little while before that, wanted to meet some retailers in town. So we did a little walk of Main Street, stopped in to Mountain Goat, Brett Kids, went down to my place for a little bit for a discussion. Brad Howard came to talk about, he liked Breck. Joe liked that so much, he said, we should do that for all of Colorado. Thought it was a great idea to sort of help people understand how they should visit, you know, when they come here and litter and stuff like that. So that was very cool. You know, it's just great sitting down and talking to him and hearing how crazy his political job is compared to ours. Then we went next door and went to Mountain Axe to meet John Cronin. And John had the whole thing set up so he could throw axes. And it was super cool, and he thought it was the best part of his week, so it was great. It's great just that, you know, he was such a big help to us, I think, during the pandemic that I, I liked that, you know, that he comes here and he likes hanging around, and so that was very cool. The other thing, I talked about this a little bit last time, and then just now with Lucy, I did have a conversation with Ball about the cups. They also got me in touch with Mananalu, which is a company that does aluminum water bottles with water in them. It's Jason Momoa's company. Both Ball and Mananalu are interested in being involved in Mountain Town's 2030, which is great. I joked to Jesse that it'd be great if Jason Momoa could be our guest speaker. That'd be cool. They're really just interested in getting the word out. Their stuff's pretty hard to get here right now. I've been trying to find a way to get it. But what I pretty much told them on the phone was, if we, it was actually Zoom, not a phone, but if we go down the road of banning plastic water bottles, we have to be able to tell what the alternative is. And I think this is a great alternative. So it's a very cool company. The guy that's the CEO is in North Carolina, where they, they're by the university, so they have a big sustainability program going on. So it's catching on really well there. Their aluminum they use is 70, this, the aluminum they use is from Ball. That's how I got hooked up with them. But it's 73% recyclable. They would like to move to 100% recyclable water bottle. would like to move to a hundred percent recyclable water bottle at some point. That's pre-prerecycled material. They also retire some plastic for every bottle that gets bought. I don't exactly, we were talking about so many other things. I didn't exactly understand how they do that, but their whole mission, Jason Momoa's whole mission is no more plastic. So it was really cool. I think between the 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 Ball cup, which we could get logoed Ball cups if we buy a hundred thousand of them, and Dylan already did this. I was talking about this in MMC, and Dylan's already beat us to it. It's really bummed me out, I gotta tell you. But I think we should march down that path. Jesse is gonna be talking to both of them sometime this week about programs, about Mountain Town twenty thirty, and seeing what their level of involvement will be. And then on the nineteenth, I have a meeting with Boomerang, who is the company that uses Ball cans in a machine that you can fill up. So we could potentially have a couple of these around town. You know, maybe I'd put one down at the restaurant, out in the game room kind of thing. I I don't know enough about that, but they're actually gonna be with Ball all day on the eighteenth, and they're gonna drive up here to meet me on the nineteenth. I'll send that out to you guys if somebody wanna, somebody wants to join me and see if Jesse can join me, too. So that's what I've been working on on the side, a little sustainability. And Jesse's been out of town, so she'll jump, jump on this when she gets back. Anything else? And with that. Good job, gang.